Minutes?
We do not.
No minutes. No form A's?
No form A's.
And I know we've received some correspondence and some comments on the zoning articles. We'll talk about that later, a little later on.
Yeah.
The ZBA agenda for...
For March 9th, I think.
March 9th or... Well, it's what I have dated, it says February 16th.
Oh, no, for the March 9th meeting?
Oh, for the March 9th meeting, ma'am, I'm sorry.
That's all right. It's hard to see.
Anybody have any comments on the ZBA agenda?
Were they notified about our meeting tonight and what we'll be discussing?
They were. They have it on their agenda for Thursday night.
Right. But if they have questions, they can come and ask us? They won't?
Absolutely.
Say they've never heard of these things before?
They should not. Actually, their administrator caught a couple of things which I forwarded to you guys in your packet. He had some comments just, you know, whether things were enforceable or stuff like that, Mr. Mullen. So I know he received it, and he did tell me he forwarded it to his board members.
Okay. And they have our contact info if they have questions?
Yes, they should.
They know how to get in touch with us?
They, yep, they should.
Sometime between now and the meeting if they have unsure about something?
Absolutely. Everybody's information is on the website, or they're free to contact me, or through Mr. Mullen.
Because I'd hate for them not to have the information they need to make decisions.
What's the agenda first?
Yep.
Okay. Excuse me, I gotta get some water.
So nobody has any comments? Okay.
Comments pertaining to...
The ZBA agenda.
ZBA agenda.
Yeah, I'll get to it.
Okay.
Same comment I made to you previously.
All right, it's 6:05. Site plan as-built review, 1400 Bedford Street.
Okay, the owner is here. And I apologize for the late timing of the decision letter. I mean, yeah, the review letter from David. I explained to you why in my emails here. But so I left you copies. I just gave one to them as well, so it's new for them too. Right?
So would you like to make a presentation?
Sure. Hi, I'm Russ Connor, rep, owners rep, Andrew Ratt, Sorel.
You got to take, so that they can hear in the microphone.
Hi, Russ Connor and owners rep, Sorel, this is Sean Hotty, the engineer that's on the project. So what we've done is we had a site plan as-built done by OID Engineering to reflect the actual conditions of the site. This is after the fact because when Route 18 was reconstructed and they were finishing it during the end of COVID and everything, Andrea went ahead and that the parking lot repaved. She did lose some parking spaces along the front with the widening of Route 18. So this plan that's submitted before you tonight accurately shows the current conditions at the site, what was done.
So I guess you understand the reason why this was an issue?
I do now. I do now. Admittedly, during COVID, we were kind of scrambling, and the insurance company contacted me that I needed to repave that parking lot. It has been the same as when I bought it and there were quite a few potholes. So to me, I was making the parking lot safer and my, you know, that's why I have them here. I'm not really fit for this. I can give you a good meatball recipe, that's about it. So this stuff has got a little over my head at first, but now with Russ and Sean, I do now understand the course, and I take full fault. It was just sort of me thinking I was kind of doing the right thing, you know? But now I get it. Learning as I go.
Nope, I understand. But the issue is that because that pavement pitches towards a pond, it now, I think, triggers something else. It has to go to conservation. Is that what the understanding is?
Yep.
If PMP should request, file a request for a certificate of compliance, DEP.
So I don't think we have, I don't think we have any problem with the spaces that it's being used for parking. We said it was okay to use for parking, but it's now that you've changed how much water is running and where it's running off to?
I didn't think that.
Yeah. So unfortunately, we've had a lot of cases of people kind of doing things and not realizing it's an issue, and so kind of just cleaning things up. So I personally, I don't want to, I feel bad having to create another hardship because I know you've been a benefit to the community since you've opened.
Sure.
But something just unfortunately have to take, take it a step further.
Have a job, yeah.
So we just got the letter here from the Norwood Engineering, so it looks like they're asking us to go through the, through the request of a certificate of compliance. I guess it's going to open the door to say, does it comply or not, and modify it that way. Certainly happy to do that. I'm interested to find out, knowing that because there was a taking, whether or not the lot got smaller enough that it wasn't actually an increase in impervious area. But I, that will be calculations that we'll have to do. And seeing this, I don't think we object to this process. It certainly gives everybody a sense of confidence that nothing incorrect was done, and if it was, that it would be fixed.
And you guys can reach out to Tony in the Conservation Office if you want to look at that original file?
Yes.
For the catch basin that could move around, and that would be probably helpful if you saw that plan versus what exists now.
Do we want to read this into the record, just so people know what it is that we're talking about here?
Sure. I'm going to read the recommendation from Norwood Engineering. I keep wanting to say PMP, because David worked for PMP for a long time. Recommendation, the applicant owner should file a request for certificate of compliance, DEP Form 8A with the Conservation Commission. The request is required to identify where the site as-built differs from the work approved in the Order of Conditions. We recommend that the stormwater analysis of the change in the stormwater resulting from paving of the area in question be provided to the commission to support the as-built condition. The commission would then be responsible for determining if a formal amendment to the Order of Conditions is warranted or a certificate of compliance can be issued. The final decision on the change will be the responsibility of the Conservation Commission. We further recommend that the planning board vote to authorize the change as an amendment to the approved site plan for the administrative record once the Conservation Commission renders a decision as noted above. A public hearing was not required for the original approval of site plan. Accordingly, we believe that an amendment to the site plan should, would not be required, not require a hearing by the planning board, but may be addressed as an agenda item. So you folks have some work to do before you come back to see us.
I'll make sure Tony gets a copy of this letter too tomorrow.
Okay.
So she'll be heads up that you guys are coming in.
Largo come after they get the certificate?
In case they have to change anything else.
Yeah. And again, I don't think our concern is the number of parking spaces. So I don't want to speak for the entire board, but I don't think we're...
No, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, as is, you know, since they've taken that land, it's been a safety concern getting in and out. So having that space definitely eases, I don't know if anyone has it, I don't mean to assume that you've been, but getting in and out has been a hardship.
Right.
And having that, those overflow spaces helps with the ease of egress and whatnot. So it is a big concern of ours, but I know you understand.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We'll see you again.
6:10 PM. Site plan review, 657 Bedford Street. Mr. Riley.
Chairman Hughes. Sean, for the record, Sean Riley, 500 Washington Street, here representing Tom and Jean Real Estate LLC. Mr. Tom O'Connell is here as one of the principals of LLC that owns this property on Bedford Street. I know the board's familiar with this property, and this has been a, an extended process, and I want to apologize out front for the, for the timetable that we've encountered. We're here tonight seeking site plan approval in your vote for a waiver of the 10-foot driveway setback requirement, which is part of our application. Obviously, you're, we would anticipate that if the board were to vote to approve, it would be subject to conditions, the main one being compliance and satisfaction with all the items outlined in Norwood Engineering's most recent letter dated March 1st, 2023. I know he's not here, but I want to compliment Dave Johnson from Norwood Engineering. He's done yeoman's work on this reviewing it. Admittedly, we've had some difficulties with our engineer. I don't want to take the words out of Tom's mouth. O'Connell's inherited this engineer in this project. If you're not familiar with the O'Connells, they do some of the larger developments in Quincy. They've worked in Granite Links, Marina Bay. So this, they thought was going to be somewhat of a pet project with six units on Route 18 in Abington. And it's taken longer for this approval than some of their other larger projects in Quincy. But rest assured, they are the builder, they are the developer. It's, it would be a quality project. Initially, this started off, and as you know, there's a single-family house on this property now, and the proposal was to add a larger building in the back with, I believe it was five units, six units total. It's since been revised now to kind of break it up into the one-unit building, a two-unit building, a three-unit building. Allows it to just kind of break up the mass of construction. We did take some time with the fire department in the fall to sit down with them and show them multiple variations of the site layout, because they expressed, they've been great to work with, bless you, wanted to be certain that they could have enough maneuverability, especially with their ambulance, because that's their widest vehicle. And they have approved and are satisfied with the layout that's before you. The site plan, the layout plan, hasn't really changed in the last several months. What, most of the details that we've been trying to iron out with the engineers has been things that you don't see, the engineering, stormwater. Initially, our engineer, Mr. Orwick, submitted this as a redevelopment stormwater design, and Norwood Engineering had the opinion that it couldn't qualify as that and had to be basically designed as a brand-new, you know, had to comply with all of the stormwater management guidelines. So the drainage was redone. There are still issues with the drainage, but it seems to be mostly coordination and specification, meaning a number shown on Sheet 2 doesn't match the same thing on Sheet 3, some of the tables. Some of the details that show a catch basin, there was some inconsistency. So it's nothing that's going to change the site plan or the layout or the number of buildings or the parking. But all in all, the, the final recommendation from Norwood Engineering, and I'll just read it into the record, is the current site plan, in my opinion, meets the general guide, general site design requirements of the zoning bylaw for the proposed use. However, there are numerous comments contained in this review relating to general consistency between plans for the proposed stormwater and sewer systems. In our opinion, these items should be able to be addressed without affecting the overall final design of the project, should the planning board decide to approve the project. So as stated, the project conforms to a lot of our zoning dimensional setbacks. It conforms to lot area, lot coverage, lot coverage. We have a maximum allowed of 60%. We're at 42%. O'Connell's have always invested in the aesthetics of their property. They will be planting 11 maple trees, 28 arborvitae, 94 shrubs, rhododendrons, hydrangeas, zinc berries, all on this property. So it will be a very attractive. And what you'll see on Route 18 is not a parking lot. You're going to see the front lawn with the four maple trees. The bulk of the actual new construction is in the rear of the property. There was a comment that Dave Johnson brought up from Norwood Engineering that we wanted to bring to your attention and which we agreed with. Our site plan shows, as required, a dumpster in the southeast corner of the property. And it's aligned so that a garbage truck or trash truck can pull in, flip at the dumpster in, and then certainly maneuver out. The thought was, it related to snow removal. Dave had the suggestion that we remove the dumpster and instead have the condominium, you know owners utilized totes, much like, much like single-family residents do in Abington already. It would be privately picked up if it was a dumpster, it would also be privately picked up if it was a tote. But that would allow us to remove the dumpster and then obviously open up that area for an ease of the majority of the snow storage and for extra maneuverability. And it's just aesthetically a more pleasing process, and frankly, it would be easier for the residents. But we are obligated to show outdoor trash recycle, outdoor trash receptacles as part of site plan review. We would be amenable if the board were to make that a condition, that we don't utilize the dumpster and instead use totes. If the board, for whatever reason, would rather stick with the dumpster, we have demonstrated our ability to do so on the plan. So I won't go into any more detail than, the site plan that you have in front of you, again, is pretty much the site plan that you most recently saw in the last edition. It was more of the, some of the drainage issues. There's some minor comments that Dave suggested, a relocation of the mailbox, posting some no parking and guest parking signs, which we don't have any issue with that. And as I said, the fire department has looked at this and is very satisfied. We used the cobblestones along the interior driveway to, to help further delineate the prohibition against parking in that area. So if you have any questions, be more willing to try to answer them. We asked our engineer not to bother to come, and Dave, I guess, we're not going to come because most of the stuff that Dave will be talking about is above my pay grade, the stormwater calculations. But it'll obviously be with, something that the O'Connells will be following up on, because we know we can't get the final approval until all of those details are finished. And Mr. O'Connell's here to answer any questions you might have also.
The question of the dumpster is all about snow removal. And this is, I mean, if you go back to the Norwood Engineering correspondence from June, it's been that long that we, Dave has been identifying the snow removal as a, as an issue here. So that, that remains a concern.
Typically with condominium, I used to live in a condominium, I used to be on the Board of Trustees, and whether it's an apartment or a condominium, it really doesn't matter. The, typically what happens when the snow plow comes, the unit owners, there's a, basically a snow removal policy. When the snow plow comes and he beeps the horn, you're supposed to go out, move your, move your cars for your own benefit, really. Because if you leave your car in your space, then you're going to get plowed in, you're not going to be able to clear the space, it's going to stay there.
Well, and that's the only way this could work, all right? Because the guest parking, five cars on this boundary of the property here.
Right. If the guest park is being utilized, right?
Yeah, couldn't get to what is shown as the area for snow storage unless those vehicles were moved.
If the fourth and fifth space at the end were open, they probably could. But to your point, yes. And we'd prefer, obviously, if we're paying a plow to come, that they plow the entire area, move this, move the cars. It's, unfortunately, it's part of condominium living, but I understand it, because if it, if the unit owners and the residents don't cooperate, they're hurting themselves. Removing the dumpster, I think, takes a huge chunk out of that issue there. But we would still have a policy where you have to move your cars, because, just because we can clear down the driveway, we still want to clear the parking spaces. Similarly, there's other smaller spaces on the outbound lane, and then on the northeast corner, it would require the owners, the, any residents who were home at the time that the plow came. Five out of the six units have garage space. It's that the existing house has two outdoor spaces, as they do now.
Quick update, it's 4-1.
I'm sorry?
It's 4-1, bad guys. So it looks like there's going to be a lot of soil removal. Is it ledge or soil in that back corner that's going to be taken out?
The southeast corner is ledge, a lot of ledge there. That's one of the things that Dave Johnson wants our engineers, maybe a different engineer that finishes up on this project, just full disclosure, to, to show, to conform, sorry, to, to show the actual final elevations. I don't know the final number, but if your question is, do we need a removal permit? I don't think we do, because it's, if you get site plan approval, it's inherent.
Okay. So, but part of the, we'll also then have you detail trucks in and out, how that's going to work, where you're going to pull stuff out of, where it's going, where it's going. So we need that sort of plan. What's it going to do if neighbors get bothered? So that's part of what we're going to need to figure out as well.
Yeah.
Especially when there's potential for a lot of ledge in there. I get a little nervous about how that's going to affect...
Yeah, I, we don't anticipate any blasting of ledge. We've been able...
But still hammering it out gets...
Yeah. Well, there's no, I don't think there's any basements in this, in these new buildings. But to your point, yes, we would do, if there's any blasting, we have to notify the neighbors and the fire department. But I haven't heard any discussions of a need for that yet.
So just want to also understand that southern property line, right now, the trees are down, there's nothing between the two properties?
On southern property line with that house that's there?
Yeah.
There's a fence there right now.
Okay.
That's going to be, we're going to add some shrubbery retaining wall and landscaping along that line.
Is that driveway fully on their property?
The neighbor's driveway?
Yes.
I think a portion of it, as it goes into the property, is slightly over. We've, we're trying to allow it to remain.
Okay. Well, yeah, I guess that's my concern is if the fencing and plantings are going to, how that's going to fit up against that neighbor's stuff. It's...
That neighbor has actually paved his front yard.
Right. That's a whole other issue.
Yeah. So he, he has parking on the left, the right, and the front for what I believe is a single-family house.
Yeah, I mean, it's a 40-foot curb cut, which we usually don't allow, but...
Right.
I guess I'm, I think there's a porch there too. Do we know that that porch is all on his property?
Yeah, no part of the building is over the line.
Including porch?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. And I can give you a Mass Highway update. That was one of the delays in this project that we had to apply for Mass. Right now, there's one driveway. We, our final agreement with the fire department was to have a one-way circular driveway. So you had to go to Mass Highway for a curb cut permit. And unbeknownst to us at the time, our engineer decided to halt any drainage design or, or calculations until Mass Highway gave us feedback. Well, Mass Highway doesn't give you quick feedback, so nothing was happening for a little while. Mass Highway has since now given us 25% approval and has approved the driveway, and has asked us to just tweak a radius.
All right. On the northern border, what type of vegetation buffering is there proposed?
There's a fence going up there.
Yep.
And if I can go to my landscape plan, it might be where the arborvitae is going. Let's see, I see a couple of maple trees up towards the front.
Yep.
Some larger trees towards the rear, and then it looks like we have at least 12 hydrangea going along the fence itself. So there'd be four maple trees, 12 hydrangeas, two of the acer saccharum, I believe that's another, yeah, it's a sugar maple. So there's over 20 plants being planted along just the northern sideline.
I guess the general comment is, generally, I haven't liked the density of what's being proposed. I think it's a lot for the site. Particularly, it's a lot of pavement for the site. It's pavement between the buildings. I don't see, you know, you can't fit any sort of little pocket gardens in there. It's, it's a lot. The saving grace, in my opinion, is that front elevation that's in here. I'm trying to pull it up right now. Yes. This one?
Yeah.
Is this conceptual, or is this kind of like, no, this is what it's going to look like?
That's, that's according to the landscaping plans that we've submitted. We have the three trees in the front yard, let's call it, the main yard, and another tree on each corner there.
And those are, those are the maples that are going to be in the front?
Yeah, I just lost my page, but yes, the larger trees. We were trying to concentrate on what it would look like when it came down Route 18.
Yeah.
We did not want to have the parking in the front, so you're going to see trees and lawn. And for the, so the residents, especially the building in the back, we also tried to maximize their backyard space.
Yeah.
We also had, I want to thank the fire department for their cooperation, because, you know, we're all learning as we develop some of these properties. And we took a look at what was over on, in Union, the airbase.
Yeah.
And they have kind of a larger scale project like this, where there's condominiums with, you know, the driveway that goes between them and the drive, and the garages under. So the fire department made sure that that driveway aisle was wide enough and that there be no parking, which is a critical thing. And that's how it's been designed at their request.
I guess what I would prefer now with my board members is language in here basically saying that this is not a suggestion, this is indeed along the lines of what it's going to look like, in that I don't want to start to see little, you know, curves start to move back slowly and things start to get paved over and, you know, all of a sudden now it's just all pavement. So part of my suggestion, I think, is going to be that this is the layout, and if there are any changes to the landscaping.
Yep.
You know, landscaping isn't a suggestion, it's going to be, no, this is what it is. You need to come back and have a discussion.
Absolutely, unequivocally, not a problem. If there is anything in the engineering underground that requires any sort of noticeable site change, we'll certainly come back to you to show you that amendment.
Yeah, if all of a sudden, the, you know, the, the five-foot grass strip next to the fence, between the fence and the driveway, all of a sudden becomes two feet, and now it becomes crushed stone, it's like, no, let's...
Yeah. The only thing I do know that is changing, and you would never notice unless I told you, it's actually a benefit, is that the driveway on the south, when you pull in, the Mass Highway wanted it to be a 30-foot radius. So that's going to require us to have some more grass between our sideline and the driveway.
Yep.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a slower curve. That will be shown on the updated set that goes to Dave Johnson.
Will that be transmitted to the condominium owners?
What would?
That the landscaping has to stay the way it is?
Yeah, I mean, that's how it's sold.
Like, once you turn it over to those?
Yeah, it's like selling a house to someone with, with the required trees. You, we lose control, you lose control. But I don't know a condominium yet that has, unless a tree gets diseased or died, why would you do it? We're, we're trying to design this so it is attractive, so it's valuable, saleable.
But that's just it, I don't want all of a sudden to drive by and now all of a sudden...
10 years from now.
All three trees are cut down.
Right.
And I have two condo owners at my door and the other. Four are going, no, 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 we're not going to replace the trees.
I'm happy to, well, we could try to put some sort of agreement in the condominium documents that the association shall maintain at least three trees in that front lawn.
Well, I think it just follows the site plan approval and conditions.
Yeah. That will, if we put in the condominium documents, it carries forward.
Yeah.
Now, it's an association obligation for...
Is it just one association? Just one, it's not going to be different?
Correct.
And is the, the snow plowing thing in that document, or is that just a policy?
No. Well, snow plowing is a requirement of the association, as is trash pickup. And so every...
That's going to be my next question.
What's that?
That was going to be my next question. That's in the contract.
It's a common expense. So the condo fees pay for the removal. I used to live over at Holpak Place in Abington when I was a bachelor, a long time ago, and that has a lot of pavement and very little snow storage room, very little snow storage room. So when we had two blizzards in a row, condominium association paid for a company to come in and remove the snow, because it just wasn't a place. I mean, we saw that, what, two or three years ago, when we saw Snowmageddon, everybody was removing snow, shopping plazas, office...
And this year, we haven't gotten any.
Right, exactly. So it's, 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 you don't even have to say it, it's a necessity, it's going to happen. But yes, a condominium will have that, and they'll have rules and regulations that are required to issue, which is parking regulations, you know, you can't... that are required to issue, which is parking regulations, you know, you can't even, I've drawn up too many of them to tell you, but it's, they are addressed.
Is that landscaping portion of it normally in those docs, or that's something you're going to put in?
It's usually not in the documents, because they buy what is there. They're also free to add landscaping if they wanted to, you know, the condominium, but to your point, I think you want, you're more concerned if we lose a tree, especially those that are visible from Route 18, we want those to be replaced.
Right.
Yep.
Sean, I just want to go back to the dumpster thing. The totes would work?
Yeah, I've already talked to Trup Way Systems to confirm that they do it, and they do do it in some of the condominiums, they use the totes, especially the smaller condos. It's more aesthetically pleasing, you don't have a dumpster, and it's easier for the unit owners, they park it in their garage, and they don't have to go out in the snow to throw things away. So, but again, site plan review says we're supposed to show outdoors trash receptacles, so we're showing it, but we're asking for you to give us the approval to utilize totes in lieu of a dumpster.
So it's a proven deal with, with the condominiums, people have used it and stuff like that?
Sure.
I mean, if you can get rid of the dumpster, that's a good thing, I suppose.
I, I think so.
Looks, less rodents, less...
Bryce?
Well, again, in terms of snow storage?
Yeah.
It's one of the few solutions that's available.
It's a win-win-win for everything, and, you know, honestly, when you drive into the entrance as designed, you would see the trash dumpster in the back right corner. Now you won't, you know, so... Aesthetically, and, and cost-wise, it's probably a slight uptick to the condo association, but that's what it's going to be when, when they move in there, that's, that's the way it is.
Do we have an approval letter from the fire department?
I actually pulled it out. It's not an approval letter, but it's an email dated August 16th from Jack Lynn, and I also got one from John Nuttall around the same time, that says, "Myself and Captain Cotty just reviewed the plans we have, and they reflect what you received and what we agreed to with, when, agreed to with when we met with them. The only difference was them showing five parking spaces near the dumpster on their PDF, and I showed three. We're fine with five, as it won't affect the turn radius we were concerned about." So I did give them the most recent set, and I didn't hear back from them. Not a surprise, because they probably already think this is done.
So I do have a, a concern, Sean, on the, some of the items listed under Norwood's Engineering's Stormwater Design section. There are 14 items listed here, and some of them, I think, are fairly straightforward, reasonably understood. Item eight, reference to the sediment and oil separator should be removed from the plans. Okay?
Right.
That's fine. Some of the other ones here, I'm less comfortable with. Calculations need to be rerun to determine the correct peak elevation in the galley systems. Stormwater calculations do not match the piping for the rational method. Pipe diameters on the plan are not consistent with the sizes in the calculations, so, not an engineer, but those things seem to be material observations that...
They are, they could require, when the calculations are rerun to Dave's satisfaction, it could require the underground, the cultech chambers, the underground drainage system, might be resized, it might, it might be larger, it might be more expensive, but that's what it is, so...
The thing is, though, that we don't know that yet.
Yeah, well, if we can't satisfy Dave, your approval tonight would be subject to our satisfaction of the town's engineer with all these issues. If we cannot satisfy this, we do not get approval. We can't get a building permit. We go nowhere.
I, I guess, given the amount of time that you've had, it's kind of disappointing that we have 14 items.
Believe you...
I assume you must be having problems with your engineer.
I'm on cable TV. It's, I'm sorry, go ahead. I called Dave Johnson directly to say, tell me what you see, what's going on, and, you know, and he, and he was confident that these things can be engineered. I don't speak the language, but it, it's going to, it can be done. And like I said, in the hypothetical world, if it can't be done, we don't get a building permit, but most of these things are just, there were things revised on the right that the calculation didn't also get revised, so it has to be redone, and if the calculation says, okay, and now you need an extra chamber, then that's what's going to have to be shown on the plan. I don't know if you have anything you want to add to that?
I just, I'm not an engineer, I just want to thank the planning board for their time and patience with this. I too am very, very disappointed with engineering response. Your comments and criticisms are just, and I would only say that if you were willing to move forward with a favorable vote, with the condition that all of these items be met, I assure you, we're going to be making some changes soon, and it will be a more fluid process. So I, I do apologize, and ultimately, it is my responsibility, but I want to assure you that we think Dave Johnson's a great guy, I wish he was available, but he's representing you well, and we will, we will satisfy all of these requirements, if you see fit to move forward with a conditional approval.
What have you heard from the water department about water availability at this point?
I have sent two emails to the water superintendent asking what their new policies are, and I haven't received any responses yet. The only thing I was able to find was one statement on, I think, the town website under the water department page, that said, "Single families and, I think, additions are allowed for connections." I asked, in general terms, not just for this project, what is the moving forward, what's the policy for commercial multifamily, is there a limit to the number of units? I have not heard, and I don't know if they've made any decisions yet, I don't know if...
I don't know, I did receive an email back from her with some links that I, honestly, I have not had a chance to look at yet, I'll be happy to do that tomorrow, and if I find any information. I was talking to her more about drought and an action plan regarding drought and capacity.
It's, I plan to hopefully attend their next meeting, their next commissioners' meeting. There's two new commissioners, so I think there was a little bit of a lag of them trying to get, move forward with the policy, that's what I'm assuming, I shouldn't assume anything, but I was not able to attend their last meeting. And Dave did cover that in his letter, that pretty much anything you guys approve now is subject to water approval, sewer approval. Sewer, we don't consider it to be an issue.
So it's, it's nothing, I, I think we're generally in favor of what's being proposed here. My colleagues in Quincy speak very highly of you and everything you've done for the city, but there's just so many kind of untied pieces right now that I'm kind of uncomfortable moving forward. I mean, I, I don't think there's going to be an issue, it sounds like it's all fixable, and you know, us and, we're liberal when it comes to, we'll let the engineers fix it out, to me, there's still just a lot of kind of...
Alternatively, if, if, if the board doesn't feel comfortable in approving it, subject to satisfying Dave's conditions, the only thing I could ask for, and I hasten to do it based on our last conversations for previous meetings, is to continue this, and we'll come back after it's re-engineered with what we consider a clean final plan.
Yeah, because I think, I think if, to satisfy some of Dave's observations, you may very well have to make changes to the plan.
Yeah.
So what we'd be, what we're being asked to do is approve a plan that may then change and would have to come back to us again, right?
Possibly, if the layout changed, yeah. Where are we now, March? If, I would not, I would consider, I don't want to come back here without it being 100% done. I want to give Dave enough time to review everything, Norwood Engineering, so, we're in March now, he may, if you want to get the plans up one before, I'm looking at like a June date for here, and we would try to have the plans done by May. Is that enough time?
I mean...
Depends what engineer...
Just trying to gauge the willingness. There is no approved plan without satisfying the engineering requirements, so that's where I had hoped that the plan would consider a conditional approval, where you're not really approving the plan to go forward in any way, because there are so many of those requirements that need to be met.
Yeah, my reservation again is the shades of gray here, right? There are some of these things that are really straightforward and can be easily fixed, and normally, I think, my experience has been, when the board approves a plan, subject to conditions, the conditions are pretty straightforward.
Yes.
Some of these are not straightforward. Some of these could result in material changes to the plan itself, and that's kind of where my discomfort comes from, is, is that it just seems like there's, there's a fair amount of discussion yet to be had, from an engineering perspective, to, to determine whether or not some of the things that Norwood has, has observed are, can be addressed, and what that means to the overall site plan.
If, would it work for both sides? If you were to theoretically have a vote to approve, subject to the conditions, subject to the waiver of the driveway, subject to the totes, but if any of the updated engineering requires a, an adjustment to the site plan, the layout, any of the, I want to call it above-ground features, that, that the plan would have to be brought back to you, if there are no changes...
Above-ground and below-ground.
Well, there might be below-ground changes, you know, but to Dave's satisfaction.
Yeah.
You know, what you'll see is a catch basin, right, that's shown on the plan, what you don't see is the cultech chambers underneath, what size they are now.
Right.
That size might change, but the parking lot doesn't, the, you know, the sheet three, the site plan, doesn't change.
Right.
If there is a physical change, we have no problem coming back to you with that report as, before Dave issues his approval, he won't issue his approval because it has to come back to you. If Dave's able to review the engineering part of it and say, this is fine, and there's no change to the layout required, okay, Dave can notify Liz, and the plan can be approved. Like, that might work, it gets our engineer direction, we like, what we're trying to is get them going, and if there's a physical change to the layout, it requires, it to be resubmitted to the board here.
Who approves the soil removal plan?
Dave usually would review anything, it's, usually we have a, an O and M...
Yeah, but we don't even know if we need one.
Well, he would, if, if, if there's a significant, any sort of significant elevation change or require, any sort of removal, it's usually part of a construction plan, like, you know, you have the gravel driveways, watering and things like that, an O and M plan, we call it, an operation and maintenance plan, he would require that. He wouldn't be limited to just what he listed here, if we submitted an updated plan and it triggered something else, he can throw that right back to us.
Right, but he's not the permit issuing authority for those permits.
All right, well, I don't want to...
And you know what, now this all starts to get very confusing for Liz. Right? I'm just saying, I, yeah, we don't want to confuse Liz any more than she needs to be. I mean, I think either way, but I, I, all I want to get back at the end of the day here is a completed plan.
Yep, as do we.
Carry it.
Right.
Right? This whole front and these sets are you guys taking up a lot of real estate in my world.
You can understand our hesitation, considering how long this project's been going on, it should have been done. And I was hoping it was going to be done tonight, and it's not.
We both stand before you embarrassed, and despite our reputations or efforts, so...
Because a couple of meetings ago, I was all for you guys starting over, it's been taking so long. And, and to, to go to the other side, Dave doesn't usually make this recommendation unless he's confident that those things can be fixed.
Right.
I mean, he, Dave would say himself, you need to come back to another meeting.
Oh, Dave has had letters where he said the plan is not ready for approval.
Right.
That's not what he said in this letter.
Right, I agree.
And my conversation, I can't quote unverbatim, that I think he felt confident that these things could be...
That, that was his recommendation.
Yeah.
And he don't normally make that recommendation unless he's confident.
And I actually had the same conversation with him.
Yeah.
And he said if there were an issue, he'd be happy to have me call him, and you guys could talk to him, but that, his recommendation is in his letter.
Yep.
That would give me the confidence to think that we're not going to run into a, a huge soil removal issue. If anything, there was one comment that he said that he might suggest raising the elevation of the foundations.
Yep.
But it wouldn't be an excavation project.
Well, I for one am confident in Dave's ability to, in his opinion, again, I am disappointed that this has been taking so long, but... So... And if, and if Dave doesn't approve it, they're right back here, if it turns into something more than...
Approving with that kind of condition or setup conditions, and it has to meet with engineering, with Norwood's approval. Obviously, there's continuing conversation that has to happen back and forth between the engineers and to kind of address things. I, I'm trying to understand the timeline here, and any impact it may have on the project development. The difference between saying, let's hold off until, wait till those engineering discussions happen, versus, we'll give you conditional approval pending the engineering, either way, the engineering conversations have to happen, right?
Right, right.
So, so if, if there's a hardship or a difficulty that we're introducing here by saying, let's push this back a little bit till the conversation's happened, then I guess that's what I'm, I'm interested in.
I don't want to put words in O'Connell's mouth, but they're frustrated and unhappy, not with the town of Abington, not with the planning board, not with the planning reviews engineer, but with others, and they want, this should have been done before. It is going to take some time to get a new engineer in here and fix this and do it right, and I think Dave Johnson's looking forward to that. My concern is, if this doesn't get to the board, you know, by the July meeting, you guys don't meet in August, and now, we're pushed back now until September. The second part of that was, is, our next step is to also go to the zoning board for the special permit for the use, and really, all I need for that is the layout plan. So it's my intention to move forward with the layout plan as soon as their engineer takes a look at it and says, I don't see anything that could possibly change above surface, you know, with the layout.
So with that said, when this new person has a look, why, why don't we put it off till the next meeting, give you a chance for a new engineer to look at this and make sure?
You would, all right, we wouldn't be submitting anything. My, my, I'm always looking at things backwards, because I have to submit three weeks in advance of your meeting, so...
I don't want a new set of eyes looking at this, and all of a sudden, it's, I don't know, even though Dave's seems to be confident, now you're bringing somebody else into the mix.
No decisions have been made. I think a conditional approval, if you saw fit to move forward in that direction, would allow me to get to work, so to speak, get to work, whether it be with a new engineer or a new engineer with the old engineer, it gives me a chance to move forward, and we're not talking about the end of the summer. And you, you know that the plan, layout, the unit count, the landscaping, that's all fixed.
Yeah.
That's all, any deviation from that whatsoever, we need to come back before you. I think it's a timing thing that I do share your frustration with.
I understand, but...
I guess I was hanging my hat a little bit on Dave's words and his, his competence and...
We usually don't have a problem, but you understand where we're at.
Yeah, I...
It's just an awful lot here in, you know, Dave's letter, and normally, you know, if we got a one or two-page letter, but this is a, you know, a long letter, and an awful lot of points that need to be addressed.
Yes.
And...
So, help me again, Sean, understand, so how, under what circumstances does this push way back into the fall, or...
You, you don't meet in August, so we would have to try to get to your July meeting if we were required to come back to you, which means we'd have to submit the first week of June, which means we'd have the two months...
Why July?
I'm sorry?
Why July?
Why do I want to get to your July meeting?
No, no, I mean, why, why, um...
Why July, not June or May?
Right.
Oh, I'm, I'm looking at worst-case scenario, I'm trying to also, let's back up the time. Meeting July, I don't know what the date is, 5th, right?
Whatever, yep.
Means we have to file three weeks in advance, which is June 10th or whatever it is, which means to give Dave plenty of time. Our hope is if, that our engineer is actually going to be, be in communication with Dave even prior to that, showing him updated drawings, trying to work through this stuff.
Right.
So we're in May doing that, right? Working with Dave before we formally submit in June 10th or whatever. That, those conversations in May are essentially two months from now or a little more than two months from now, right? And I just want to make sure that there's sufficient time to get a hundred percent plan. I think there is. If we cut it back, try to push it back, we're just going to hope that our engineer gets it done within 30 days from now, gets it to Dave, gets his comments back, re-ups it, submits it in May for your June meeting. It's possible, very possible. But I just, I don't want to come here and bend a knee and ask for a continuance from the June meeting to July because Dave needs a little more time or whatever the issue is. That's what I'm thinking.
Liz, can we vote to, in this case, only suspend the day deadline to get us the stuff for the July meeting?
As long as Dave's having an opportunity to look at it.
Yeah.
But I can't get it the day before the meeting.
Right, so I mean, we've moved it to, you know, June 20th.
Yeah, I mean, Sean and I can work out a date that would be.
Yeah.
Because, well, I mean, actually, you would get me copies of anything that's going to Dave anyway.
Yeah, everything's submitted through here.
For the final, yeah. So I would have it. I wouldn't necessarily get everybody's copies until it's all worked out.
Right.
Right. Yeah, I mean, you can definitely shorten the timeline, the submission.
I would like to think you could do that sooner than that.
Yeah.
That's worst-case scenario.
That's our goal. That's our goal, no doubt about it, is to not run into any conflict with August. Our goal is to get it done in weeks.
Sean, I understand, your construction time is coming up.
Right.
You'd like to get it constructed, I'm sure.
And costs are up.
Yeah, yeah. It just rates arise and I get the whole thing.
Do you think somebody could look at it before May?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
And, and tell you that what it, what it's going to be is what it's going to be, and then you could come back in May?
I'm happy to.
Wouldn't necessarily have to have all the bells and whistles done, but if they're a new engineer and they're an old engineer, however you're doing that, however you're packaging that up.
I'm happy to just give you an update next month for a, whether I'm here or not, I'll give you an update so the board is aware of what our timetable is. Whether you give us conditional approval tonight, which I still hope you will do, because I, we, we're still going to try to go as fast as we're going to get the approval to satisfy Dave. With, with, everything that we look at doesn't indicate they're going to have a, we're going to need to change our layout. With the exception of that Mass Highway 30, went from a 20-foot radius to a 30-foot radius, it's the only change, but it's, other than that insignificant. Landscaping's not changing, parking's not changing, building location's not changing. All of those issues that you brought up, Mr. Shepherd, are the underground drainage issues and making sure that the calculations match the detail. That's an engineering issue that none of us here can do, but if Dave says it has been done, there's no need to come approve the same layout. If Dave says it can't be done, something has to be revised, then yes, I have to come back to you because you haven't approved that revised plan. You're approving this plan. So I think we got you covered if you gave us the conditional approval tonight, subject to the waiver and the totes. If there's a change, I have to come back to you regardless. That, that would be true in any site plan if, if the approved plan had a change to it.
It's not the first time we've done that. One of us signed, signed the building permit before he gets his permit. It's usually me, but.
So what's the flavor of the board? Should we give them conditional approval or vote to continue this?
I'm personally not in favor. Just like I said, there's too many loose ends. You're changing engineers. It's just, it's, it's not, I'm dotting the i's and crossing the t's. I could be in the minority, but I just, I don't have a problem with, I think, the plan overall. But like I said, it's just, there's so, as much as we trust Dave, it's ultimately our names on the permit and the plans, so, you know, we're the ones elected to make the decisions. And I feel, I don't feel comfortable abrogating so much of the decisions at this point to, to hire a consultant.
And I think what you heard from Rick earlier was the board's, and I'll share this, board's willingness to do whatever we can do to help
Yep.
bump this along as quickly as possible.
Yep.
So if it becomes a question of, you know, logistics of when things have to be filed, and we can modify that in some fashion to make it a little bit easier and quicker to get in front of us, I mean, I'd be in support of that as well. We're not, the objective isn't to give you a hard time.
Right.
Or to make this take longer than it's already taken.
We're all in agreement.
Yeah.
Then I would suggest, given the spoken opinions of two of the four members, that if the board were to, I guess the other option, the only other option is to continue it. So if we're in March right now, I would, I would say, let's continue to the May meeting. And if there's a delay, an issue, you know, with the engineering, we'll notify you and explain why that it might have to be pushed to June. I would regret having to do that, but I want to kind of put the pressure on the engineer.
Sure.
That would be my thought, if you guys don't mind me having to ask for an extension to June if the need arises, as opposed to just extending it now, continue it now to June. I don't want to waste that time if we're able to satisfy things earlier.
Right.
Yeah, I think if we go with a continuance tonight, it would be great to have an update at our next meeting on this, too, if possible.
I could do that. Like it or not, I talk to Liz at least two or three times a week.
Oh, I'm sure it's a pleasure.
Well, that's true.
So, anyone want to make a motion to continue this to the May meeting?
Motion to continue to the May meeting.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, thanks for your time.
Thank you for your patience and.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I'll see you. I'm going to hang, I'll be back. Rusty.
Okay. It being six fifteen, public hearing on proposed zoning changes.
Do you have a copy of them or would you like a copy?
I have.
Okay, I left a few extra copies up there. Excuse me, my phone is beeping.
Anyone want to get up and stretch?
I need two minutes.
Not a lot of interest in that project. Not a lot of interest in that project on 675 Bedford Street, 657 Bedford Street. Well, we have.
Oh, you might have to administrate it.
Yeah. That's, that's the next item after town meeting.
Six ten and six fifteen, an hour discussion.
Sorry.
You can blame Sean Riley for that?
As soon as I saw you, I knew it was a trouble. No attention.
None taken whatsoever.
Okay, I think I'll read the first paragraph.
Okay.
All right. Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, March 6, 2023, at 6:15 PM, Abingdon Town Hall. Planning Board is to consider the following amendments to the Abingdon, Town of Abingdon zoning bylaw, Chapter 175. The full text of the proposed zoning amendments and all supporting documentation can be found at the Planning Board office and the Town Clerk's office in Town Hall, and additionally can be found at the Town of Abingdon website.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to add to that, it's in two places on the website. It's on the town meeting page and it's on the planning board page.
So, I guess I'll read the first one. Amendment 17534, C, excavation of sand and gravel or other earth materials by adding the following three sections. 12, topsoil and/or soils with high organic content suitable to support vegetation shall not be removed from the site unless approved through the special permit process. 13, topsoil shall be spread across all disturbed areas that are def sufficient to sustain vigorous vegetation growth upon completion of site disturbance activities. And 14, where construction activities have compacted soils within vegetated or landscaped areas, measures shall be taken to restore natural soil permeability such as rotiliating of soil. Comments on this?
So, I just want to make sure all of you have the feedback from Bill Mullen, who works for the Zoning Board of Appeals. He, I sent that to you in your packets, and then earlier today I received some comments from Gene Matiosis, who's on the Conservation Commission. So I have printed those out and left them for you.
Does this apply to any construction where a certain amount of earth is dug up or only for mining-type activities, mining gravel-type activities?
I don't know, do you have your zoning book?
Mining.
Mining.
Sean Riley?
Just, you know, the, in the same 17534, Part A says, except when incidental to and reasonably required in connection with the construction of an approved use or structure or an approved subdivision on the same site as prescribed previously, then it says, no removal for sale, trade, or other consideration of sand and gravel or other earth materials in excess of 30 cubic yards should be allowed, except by special permit from the Board of Selectmen, and the applicant shall follow the following procedures. So the procedures you're adding would apply to those kind of non-site plan approval things, non-subdivision approval things, but more of a gravel removal operation or something like that if it exceeds 30 yards.
That's the way I read it, I am not town councilor. I mean, we haven't had a topsoil or an earth mining operation in town for a few decades, I'm guessing. So, I'm just thinking, let's say it's a large, I don't know, a large commercial development's going up off Bedford Street somewhere, and part of what they have to do is they have to dig out, claw out 100 cubic yards of material, and they're going to sell it to somebody else. Does that trigger this?
Um, well, it says in excess of 30 yards, right?
Right.
If it's not an approved subdivision or approved use of a structure or construction, sorry, construction of an approved use of structure.
And I should actually add, for everybody at home, that these changes, if you haven't heard before, came about from the consultants who did our MS4 stormwater permit. They reviewed all of our bylaws and came up with these changes, a portion of which need to be done at a town meeting because there's zoning changes, and the other portion, the planning board will be taking up in the fall because it's relative to the subdivision But it's all about low-impact development.
So basically, what it's saying is if someone was to start a new gravel pit or a sand pit or something, that once they stop, they have to put the topsoil back on top.
Yeah. And it specifies that it's going to have high organic content, so stuff will actually grow.
Right. So, this isn't for robbery in this way, that type of a project.
Yeah, it will not be.
That's part of the site plan approval process.
I mean, I guess it would be something for you guys to consider for the next subdivision approval, if they're going to be removing or excavating X amount of land. If you move forward with this.
No.
No?
I think this is really for excavation, you know, mining operations type of thing. It's more common down in the Plimpton area and, you know, the PA Landers sites. If you look at, this is Part C that you're amending and adding this language, Part C, other things that it already says is that, equipment for the sorting, washing, crushing, and drying, blah, blah, blah. Any access to excavated areas must have keep-out danger signs. You know, it talks about all that. The use of explosives shall be done according to regulations for Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So like Liz said, it is basically the stormwater people saying that, okay, when you're done taking out the gravel you want, put loam back on top of it so that something now grows and you don't just leave it as a barren site.
Yep.
Well, I think there's some other hoops they're going to have to jump through, too, if they want to do something.
Certainly, yeah, this is only one bylaw that might apply.
This is just part of it.
Yeah, I mean, in case, you know, someone wants to start one off North Quincy Street, it's nice to have.
Yeah.
If people, if, between now and town meeting, if a lot of things start to get raised about this, we can certainly pull it out. But I mean, it's, it's a minor change for an issue we probably will never deal with, but it's fine.
And if I could add, just to be clear, it already has language in what is now going to be Part 15. A plan for the replacement of at least six inches of topsoil, overall excavated, filler otherwise the surface surfaces, and seeding, da, 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 that's in there already. This is just, this new language from the stormwater people is kind of more expanding that.
It's more making sure that it's good topsoil.
Right.
Yeah, and it's native to that same location. Keep what you can. And if for some reason you have to remove it, you can, you can only do that as part of your special permit approval, you have to get that specifically allowed.
I have no problem moving forward with it. It's not needle-moving, doesn't change a lot of things, but, you know, I feel like at this point, if we don't do anything, we'll have another, we'll have an operation proposed next week, so. I'm, I'm fine with it.
How are we doing this procedure? Are we going item by item or?
So I know you expressed some concerns earlier that the zoning board of appeals is not meeting till Thursday night.
Yeah, kind of where I'm heading with that, yeah.
This is on their agenda. I did suggest earlier, if you guys wanted to take some votes tonight and then meet again Monday night, if they provide any feedback on any of these items. again Monday night, if they provide any feedback on any of these items, that we could certainly do that, that's an option for you. And that way would also give you an opportunity to read what Mrs. Matiosis sent.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Because that was at the eleventh hour, kind of.
Yeah, it's kind of unfortunate that the timing of this and some of the comments have come in as late as they have, but I do think it's incumbent on this board to kind of take all of that feedback into consideration and make conscious decisions about what we're agreeing with and not agreeing with.
Yep.
When do we need to have a final vote?
So, that's why I would suggest you take these votes tonight, and then if, you know, worst-case scenario, at least action has been taken, because if we don't have anything, if we don't have anything in the warrant that has a recommendation from the Planning Board, then I don't even think they can take action on it. Do you remember? I know the Planning Board has to make a recommendation.
There is required of a public hearing, private town meeting, and to make the recommendation at town meeting. So, I think the question is, if you take a vote tonight and then someone comes up with another idea or question, you want to tweak it, could you take a second vote?
They could do that. I just want to make sure in case, worst-case scenario, let's say you can't have a second meeting or something happens, at least these votes are recorded, right? And we can move forward with those votes, but you're certainly free to.
What's the warrant deadline? I mean, is that what we're up against?
Kind of, yeah. So, I mean, next Monday night, I think.
Is the deadline?
Yeah.
You also would be able, if something came up, someone came up with a brilliant idea or noticed a mistake, you could make an amendment on the town meeting floor, as long as it's within the scope of what you're putting on the warrant for approval. So, if it was a word change or?
Simple stuff, but you can't change the inherent meaning of it.
Right.
Yeah, just, as I was saying to Liz, just a general discomfort that we're contemplating zoning changes, and the Zoning Board of Appeals hasn't weighed in yet and won't until, isn't going to take that opportunity until a meeting coming up later this week.
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Did you say, Liz, that we would meet this coming Monday night after the ZBAA had taken action?
Yes, so the ZBAA will take their votes this Thursday night. I will ask Mr. Mullen if I can have the results of that on Friday. If there's nothing, I mean, I can post a meeting on Thursday for you guys to meet Monday night, and if there is no change, if they don't have any recommendations, then you certainly don't have to meet. But if they do have recommendations that you feel you want to follow up with, I can get those up to you Friday and decide if you want to move forward with the meeting Monday night or not. But I would need to post it Thursday to meet Monday, and the Selectmen meeting Monday, and I'm pretty sure that's it, because we're going to have the warrant out, and it's going to be posted, like, two weeks out. So, we're nearing that.
Right.
And I'm not in charge of it, so. Sean Riley is?
I'm moved to recommend, this is our number for this, change this to one seventy-five thirty-four C.
Okay.
Second.
So, we go ahead, we make
Yep.
this motion?
Yep.
If something comes out of Thursday night's meeting that warrants reconsideration, then we can revisit.
You can.
And we can meet at that point to.
We can. You can actually, they can just keep the public hearing open till Monday night.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you do that.
Then you can take public comment, which would mean.
You'd also have to attend, you'd have to show up at your hearing on Monday, and if there's nothing to be said, then you'd have to.
Yeah, you'd have to adjourn, close the public hearing, and then you could adjourn the meeting. You guys are making me think way too much. I mean, it's completely up to you. I don't know what you want to do, what you don't want to do, but those are your options. But Monday night would really be.
I can't imagine any of this is going to be tweaked that great, that we can't tweak it on town meeting floor if we had to.
I think the biggest thing that I've seen come back is the parking, and that's actually, Mrs. Cronin is concerned about number five, amending the required, the parking near the major transit areas. And that's certainly something you guys could include in your MBTA community zoning versus addressing it now. It's something we could put off till then because she wasn't able to stay. I'm happy to read her letter, but again.
I mean, we could, that particular one, they've got to demonstrate
Right.
that that, to us.
Right.
So, they don't get it by right.
No.
It just allows them the ability to.
Gives them an option. And the other thing is the parking spaces.
Yeah, I might have a problem.
Right, so you're not the only one. I personally kind of have. But again, I think.
I got enough things in my car already.
Right, right, that it could be, maybe just you guys could make that determination at game time, right? Like, if it's a small project and the spaces could be smaller, then that might be something to consider. I'm not talking about a Target or a Walmart.
No, but Target could also benefit from the other part of maybe some impervious
Right.
parking lot's huge.
Right, so at the end of the day, that's it.
Target, you mentioned, say, we want to establish compact car parking as zone for that.
Yeah.
And so now they have a section that's just, it's ninety wide.
Right, and electric car parking, and then maybe do what those apartments did, and you have the gravel under and grass over, but it can always be converted to additional parking if necessary. I mean, that's all stuff for you guys to think about moving forward, but.
May I? One of the proposals is to change the minimum parking space size from ten feet wide to nine feet wide, and then there's language in there that ten feet may be required in certain circumstances of certain areas. If you make that change to the bylaw and make the minimum nine, there's language where you can require it to be ten feet where you think it's appropriate. If you don't change it down to nine, the Planning Board cannot
Upsize it.
cannot waive that, make it go down to nine. That now becomes a zoning variance. I think that was one of the purposes, was set the base at nine with the ability to require it wider.
So, we finish with one yet?
Yes, you finish with one.
Well, Rick made the motion.
Nobody seconded it.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Nobody seconded it.
Bruce didn't, didn't he?
Okay.
No, Bruce can't.
I can't.
Bruce can't. I'll second it.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded on item one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Two.
Before we go to two, can we, can we figure out what we're going to do with the rest of these? Are we meeting next Monday night? Can the board make that determination?
I would recommend we continue the public hearing till Monday, have it being posted for Monday night, and then
Okay.
we can show up and close it up.
Everyone okay with that?
Could be a one-minute meeting.
Or, or, how about this? How about we schedule a meeting for Thursday at seven o'clock jointly with the Zoning Board and sit there, and then we take our, make our decisions.
Yeah, I'm good.
Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, Monday night would be fine.
Okay.
So, it's consensus of the board that we meet on Monday night.
All right, so before we go, don't forget to continue the public hearing.
Don't make that happen. It's a very quick meeting.
Yes. I think it's crossed. Right?
Okay.
All right.
So, we'll move on to item two. Amend, item two, amend one seventy-five thirty-eight D, Central Business District parking requirements by adding the following line to Section D. Shared parking is encouraged for commercial and real retail use based on different, differing peak demands.
This is where Mr. Mullen had made the point, took exception to the word encouraged or questioned that.
Because it's enforceable.
Why the word wouldn't be required instead of encouraged. And I think it's the same point he's made for several of these.
I mean, we have language in here where we have standards, I think. I mean, you know, part of the consideration will be it does X, Y, Z. So, I mean, no, it's not enforceable on its own, but it more says, we would really like it if you figured this out, and it, you know, approval doesn't hinge on this, but it is a standard of ours that we'd like to see. May I, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Under this, Section one seventy-five thirty-eight, Central Business District, there already is language that says this, so I don't know if this is necessary. This is suggested language in Section to be added to Part D, but in Part B, which is entitled Design Considerations, the third element is common access driveways and shared parking shall be provided where possible. So, it already kind of says that. The new language is shared parking is encouraged for commercial and retail uses based on different peak demand. So, I think there's language that's already in this bylaw that says that. In the interest of time, you may not need to put this on the warrant. It's up to you guys if you'd like to add it as an extra emphasis. I'm not advocating either way, but I wanted you to be aware that if you don't do this, it already is in there.
Any comments?
I'm just looking for that. Where are you looking, where'd you say that is?
It's in Section B three.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't, I don't think it quite says the same thing, but I agree that it gets hints at it, but I also don't think we have the ability to make that big of a change. But, I mean, I guess bottom point is that we do have language in here that sometimes says shall be provided when possible. It's not like, not everything is black and white in our bylaws.
And actually, rereading this would actually make more sense for, like, residential and commercial or retail, right? Because in the Central Business District, aren't we looking for a mix of residential and commercial?
You can't have a hundred percent commercial, but
Right.
to your point.
Well, no, even just the mixed use, so
Yeah.
you know, Martin's has a full breakfast, so we don't want you, we don't want you sleeping in late and taking up those important parking spaces, right?
The theory is to not over-pave the lot, to have designated parking for each business. You know, if each business needs ten spaces and there's four businesses in the building, do you need forty spots? Or will thirty really satisfy you because they open at different hours? That's the whole theory. It's kind of already in there, and there's other language in other parts of our zoning bylaw that allows for designating parking to be shown on the plan but not constructed for that purpose. Don't pave it if you don't have to. With language that says the building inspector can later require it to be constructed if a parking problem is shown to develop.
How much can we change this without having to have a whole nother public hearing? Not much, probably. Like, we can't say, instead of amending one seventy-five thirty-eight D, we're amending one seventy-five thirty-eight B, right? Yeah, okay.
Well, in light of fact, there appears to be language that already speaks to this issue. Can we just not, vote not to?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I'd like that it specifies commercial and retail, just to make it very clear, but.
You can always revisit that if we do something in the spring and you can make it
Yeah.
the flip with residential.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so you guys are going to pass over?
I'd make that motion, yeah.
Second.
Okay.
All those in favor of passing over? Okay. We're going to move on to three. Amend one seventy-five forty-three, space area requirement by changing dimensions in one A from ten by eighteen to nine by twenty, and in one B from ten feet to nine feet to twenty-four feet, adding the following to one A. Spaces for high-volume commercial uses may be, may require a ten-foot width for the most heavily-used areas in the parking lot. Two A from twenty-five feet to twenty-four feet, adding a new three materials in subsection A. When constructing parking spaces, consider the use of previous materials or surfaces, particularly for low-use parking areas such as overflow, long-term, or minimally-used parking areas. Minimalization of impervious surfaces and pervious materials shall be considered.
As long as we have the ability to require the ten feet, I don't have a problem with this.
Mr. Riley, would you make any comment?
I'm just curious if the building department had any concerns with Section three, because it's kind of another, one of those kind of sort of encourage things. I think it's good language, but I don't know if they have any concern about it or not. But otherwise, as I stated earlier, and I think I submitted last time some notes from other towns, this kind of brings us kind of more conformity to other towns where nine foot wide is the minimum, twenty foot long is kind of now the typical norm. Our current bylaw says ten foot wide by eighteen feet long, but as we all know, that was drafted years and years ago before SUVs and long-body pickup trucks came into effect, so a lot more towns are going to the twenty-foot-long spaces. So, the proposal would change it from ten foot wide by eighteen to nine foot wide by twenty as your minimum. The board, though, can require ten foot in certain circumstances or certain areas. Target's a good example. You might say, you know, everything within fifty yards of the front door has to be ten foot wide spaces, and everything out in the hinterlands can be nine foot wide. Save some room out there for grass and trees. Again, this is not, this is part of the proposal coming from the stormwater people.
Yeah, and I get it. They're looking to make less paving.
Right, and potentially use some pervious paper, especially out in the edges of the parking lot.
I guess what I'd prefer is to keep the existing language, but then kind of flip it and add a Section C, and then say spaces could be reduced, you know, based on developer preference that, you know, to create areas for compact cars or other things. I mean, I think I'd rather do it that way, where the standard is the same, but you give them the permission to go lower if they have a reason, which means we couldn't approve this currently.
Well, I I think you could.
You could. You can reword it now.
You could. You can reword it, as long as you're not changing detriment, I mean, impacting it. What's the word I'm looking for? Significantly.
Part of the hearing process is a little different than the town meeting amendment process. So, yes, Rick, you could theoretically write it to keep it at ten by eighteen, however, the permanent granting authority may by majority vote allow a, you know, nine-foot-wide space.
Rick, do we need a separate public hearing to make that sort of a change?
Tonight's hearing is to talk about the proposed changes to this bylaw. There's a proposal. Do you agree with that as written, or do you want to tweak it? And then whatever you guys, as a result of your hearing tonight, approve, that goes to the warrant, and town meeting can then decide to take it as it's prepared, proposed then, or they could try to tweak it with certain limitations as to how much can be tweaked. Okay.
I'm just trying to think of the wording.
So, it would be
It would be insert subsection C.
Ten feet, but, yeah, so I'd leave A alone, right? And then add subsection C, the permanent granting authority by majority vote may allow nine foot by twenty foot.
Nine foot, we're not changing the eighteen. May, let's see, the
Approve a different dimension, provided that it's no narrower than nine feet and no shorter than eighteen feet. Provided that the applicant.
Just don't even do that.
Okay.
They're going to have to ask you for that vote and ex- They're going to have to ask you for that vote and explain why.
But I'd like them to understand that this is what, we're not just going to do it because they don't feel like it.
Yeah.
Don't feel like it. That there needs to be some standard as to why we would consider it. And it's basically to help reduce the amount of, you know, pervious surface to encourage the use of compact vehicles to, or some other purpose.
Okay, so we're going to leave 10 by 18 or 10 by 20 on that first line in line A?
10 by 18.
All right, so we're going to leave 10 by 18. I'm going to take out the spaces for high-volume commercial uses. And then we're going to add C. Permit granting authority by majority vote may approve a different dimension, provided the minimum would be 9 feet by 20 feet for the perpendicular spaces, perpendicular angled space.
I mean, minimum is 9 feet wide or, and 18 feet because we allow 18 feet long now.
Right, so 10 by, oh, okay.
So, they can't come in and ask for 10 by 16?
No. Well, do you want to leave it 9 by 20 and then it could be 9 by 18? Or just leave it 20, 20?
It's, can someone come in and ask for a 9 by 18? If they want to, you know, encourage the use of, you know, Kia Souls, which are only 10 feet long.
So, you're basically not going to change the current wording of B, I mean, sorry, A, because A currently says 10 feet by 18 feet.
Right.
For perpendicular angle spaces. Don't touch that. B currently says 10 by 22 for parallel. The proposal was 9 by 22. Most cars are about 6 and 1/2 feet wide, some are 7. That's your call if you want to keep it at 10 or change it to 9.
But again, I think what I drove last weekend, a Kia Forte, and it was, you know, maybe 7 feet long. So, I mean, you know, they could want to have a spot, spaces for those sort of really compact minis. And you don't need 20 feet.
Agreed.
Give them an 18-foot. I mean, it's a 9-foot-wide, 18-foot option.
So, leave B at 10?
Mm-hmm.
So, the only change would be in this section would be to add C.
Which would kind of corral all that other stuff as a may allow.
Yep. Can you read that again?
No. C, "Permit granting authority by majority vote may approve a different dimension, provided the minimum would be 9 feet by 20 feet," right?
No. Minimum dimension would be 9 feet, I think, 8 by 18 feet. Yeah, but it's already is required, minimum 18 feet.
10 by 18 is required.
So, you're saying provided the minimum width is 9 feet?
Yes. So, I don't need, it's just 9 feet.
Right.
All right.
The reason I use permit granting authority, just so we're clear, is in some parts of the bylaws says the planning board shall decide and some things the zoning board shall decide. By saying permit granting authority, it allows whichever board you have to be in front of to make that decision. So, if I'm at a site plan hearing, you guys have the ability to make that decision. Whereas if I'm at a zoning board hearing for a building setback, I could also ask them while I'm there, "Can you adjust the parking?" Okay, so it would apply to either board.
So, do you want to actually amend the materials in the same fashion? The permit granting authority, special permit granting authority shall require the use of pervious materials or surfaces?
It says "may require."
Yes.
Is, are you changing 2A, the aisle width? It's proposed to change from 25 to 24. Again, several of the towns use the 24, some use 25. It's designed to, again, take a foot away from the parking, the pavement. If it's one-way, it's a 12-foot-wide lane. If it's a two-way, you'd think it'd be 24, but our bylaw right now says 25.
And if I'm a small business and I want to make it, you know, 22, I have to go to the zoning board?
Yes. Anything less than 25 has to get a zoning variance right now.
Yeah, I'd be okay reducing that.
So, the 24?
Yeah.
With all that said, are we done with this one? I'll make the motion to make those changes to 3.
Second.
Second. Motion made and seconded.
Hold on. So, we changing 3, too? We changing the third part of that, the materials, that the permit granting authority may require the use of pervious materials or surfaces?
Yeah, I like that wording better.
When constructing. If I don't get this right tonight, you know it happens.
Can you amend that?
Okay.
Yep, I'll amend that.
I'll still second it.
So, that's Bob and Rick?
Yep.
So, the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor with the changes?
I...
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to number four. Amend 175-50, "Visual relief for lots to further define required buffer requirements."
So, just a quick note. Jean Matiosus thinks the language of suitable landscaping is vague.
That, however, leaves it to the planning board's discretion whether it's suitable or not. You guys can say it's not enough, we want more. Or, "Don't plant that type of tree there because it'll wreck the fence in three years." So, I think, I think it's wise to have language, and I think we all agree, in what we're trying to do is to put in writing clauses that allow the zoning board and the planning board to have the ability to adjust things after reviewing a plan without the necessity of maybe saying, "Oh, you're going to have to come back next month and refile and ask for a variance to that." You know, or you may not be allowed to shrink a parking space under current bylaws, but now you have the ability to if the board votes.
So, in some ways, this would require a, more trees on the same length of buffer. So, if you were 200-foot buffer, under the current regulations, you have to have five. Under the new regulations, you'd have six. However, the new regs also add additional language about passing a certain distance away from corners impairing sightlines. So, I mean, in some ways, I think it's almost a wash.
I think it's...
My fear is if you had a 30-foot buffer strip, would that mean you can't put any because it's always within 20 feet of a street corner?
It's not always within 20-foot of a street corner.
Okay.
It could be, but it's not always.
So, there you go.
And the language, again, that says, "Or as may otherwise be approved," gives the board the reason. You know, basically, it's designed to give the engineer, the design engineer, the basic design level. This is what we need. And if it won't fit, we can discuss it or request that the board approve taking out that one tree. Or explain to us why you can't fit the sixth tree. You can say, "'Cause it's on the street corner and I'm not allowed. We don't want to create a hazard." Okay. The board has the authority to move a tree, to delete a tree, to change the type of tree. But at least it gives the engineer and the lot owner, the property owner, the knowledge upfront that this is the, this is the minimum we want you to come in with on the plan and we'll discuss it.
I don't know if the board wants to amend the last sentence. So, it says, "Instead of landscaping areas are encouraged, landscaping areas may be required to incorporate stormwater treatment measures to treat runoff from the adjacent parking areas."
I like that. I like the fact that it should be required.
It might be, right? If it's something they really can't do, then you guys still have the option of not requiring it. But it also lets developers know that this is the stuff we're trying to do.
How does this language compare with the other buffer language that we've been dealing with? Is it, doesn't some of that have a 20-foot buffer? If it's a commercial use to a...
Between, yes. That's what, that's what we amended it to last year, right?
What's that?
The 20-foot between a commercial use and a residential use.
But that's a different bylaw, isn't it?
Yeah.
I would call that, I was trying to figure out an example of what they're trying to encourage. And I, two of them came to mind, and I don't know if you guys thought of anything, but you could essentially use a grass strip as a swale so that water would go in and percolate instead of using it as a mounded landscape island, which becomes a firm. The second one I've, we haven't seen in this town, you don't see it, haven't seen around Massachusetts a lot, is they have some very interesting things for parking lots where they have like tree boxes with basically like a gap underneath where the water can get under and go into a drain. But you don't see it because there's just, there's a large box with tree and grass or mulch or whatever in it. That could potentially be something else. Might not see that, that specifically designed along the perimeter of a parking lot, along a street line, you probably don't want to have boxes of trees along there, but you might see it in the interior of a parking lot.
So, what's interesting is we do have one, it's 175-66 buffer strips. So, if I'm a business, it's actually better for me to have a parking lot next to a residential property because then the buffer's 10 feet than to have just a general piece of my land, which would require a 20-foot buffer. So, you know, if I have, let's say I have a side yard on my factory, I have to have a 20-foot buffer zone. But I could put a parking lot on the side and I'd only need a 10-foot buffer.
Well, this, this only talks about parking lots that abut public ways. So, it'd be the strip that's between the street and the parking lot?
Well, it says parking lots that abut residential districts or existing residential uses.
Oh, you're looking down the bottom there. I'm sorry. Yeah, I was looking at the first line. Yeah, on the rear end side, parking lots.
Can we, can we adjust that to 20 feet as well or is that beyond the scope of what this is? Or can we say parking lots must follow the guidelines of 175-66?
I wonder why they didn't change that.
Can you read 66?
"Where commercial, multi-unit residential or industrial uses adjoin existing residential properties or residential districts, whether developed or undeveloped. Adequate buffering should be provided, yada, yada. A buffer strip..."
A buffer strip of 20 feet with staggered evergreens or with natural vegetations or the more common one is a solid fence 6 feet high with suitable plantings, which doesn't require the 20-foot strip. So, working together, this would require, this one we're looking at now, 50, what does, Section 175-50 requires a parking lot to have a 10-foot buffer with a residential property. The bylaw that you just said there is going to require either 20-foot vegetated, 20-foot double row of evergreens or the fence with suitable plantings.
Right.
Which...
If you're along what, multiple, multi-family and commercial? Commercial, multi-unit residential, industrial uses or, yeah, that adjoin existing residential properties or residential districts.
Yep.
So, I mean, I would just change it to parking lots that abut residential districts must meet the buffer strip requirements of 175-66. But is that beyond the scope? Do we need to have, would we have to repost this one?
I think we would have to repost it. I think it materially changes that bottom piece.
I don't know that he had to repost. My opinion, again, I'm not town council. You know, the hearing was to address proposed changes in 175-50. And the goal is, sorry, I'm trying to pull up my zoning law.
So, you just wanted to conform to 175-66?
Yes.
Okay. So, I will email town council tomorrow and ask if that can be amended?
The rest of it I don't have a problem with.
If you, if you, if you change Section 50, that sentence, to simply refer to Section 66, then if a commercial, multi-unit residential or industrial use adjoining residential properties or residential districts would only need at a minimum a 6-foot-tall fence with suitable plantings or the 20-foot vegetated buffer.
Yeah, so I guess, our reading is that the applicant doesn't get to pick. We get to pick, which is the or.
Not necessarily, no. I disagree because if I, if I, if my design complies with either double row of evergreens or a fence, then I comply. You, this is, this says, "You must provide a buffer of A, B, or C." Okay, I pick B or I pick C.
But it's the suitable that holds you up. Because we can say...
Suitable plantings.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you can discuss it and, you know, you have site plan review. If you say, "In this situation, that residential house is so close, I don't think a 10, a fence with suitable plants is sufficient. We're going to require more, but we're not going to give you site plan approval."
Either way, what's in 175-50, I think, is less strenuous than what's in 66. Because all it says is it just needs to be a landscape buffer strip. Landscaping is just grass.
I agree with you on that, yeah. So, I'm not saying, "Don't do what you did." I'm just saying, I'm alerting you that the 10-foot minimum goes away. But really, now you're leaving them with the option of a solid fence or a 20-foot minimum, which is part of site plan review.
If you left this, it would be at least 10-foot buffer strip.
10-foot in grass, maybe. No fence, just grass.
It's a buffer strip, though, grass, really.
Whereas 175-66, you at least have a fence and we can at least define what a suitable planting is.
But do you have to do both in 175-66?
Yeah, so the, out of the three options, if you're going to pick the third option, you have to have a 6-foot fence and suitable plantings.
What if you pick just the fence?
Can't.
Okay.
6 feet in height complemented by suitable plantings.
Isn't the zoning stuff fascinating?
It's awesome because...
It really is.
Sorry.
No, but it's necessary.
It's necessary, well, all right. So, I'm going to have that refer back to 175-66. That's the wish of the board, and I will double-check that with town council.
If, and I would make the motion to approve with the addition of the 175-66 language. And if town council rules that it's beyond the scope, that... and if town council rules that it's beyond the scope, that the rest of the motion stays.
We revert back.
We'll consider as it is.
Okay.
Make sense?
Yeah.
The motions been made, seconded. All those in favor of those changes?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on to number five. Amend 175-53 reduction in parking requirements by adding the following. D, areas near major transit stops may be considered for reduced parking requirements, should the applicant demonstrate that lower requirements are appropriate.
Mr. Chairman, if it's okay, I'd like to read the letter that Frank Cronin left. She had to leave, she did wait some time. To the planning board, my concern is related to number five, which suggests an amendment to reduce the number of parking spaces required for areas near major transit stops. I am worried that the amendment would allow more apartments approved at zero summer street, since the number of parking, required parking spaces would be reduced. This, the residents of apartments will need cars and probably more than one per unit to be able to access what Abington has to offer. Thank you, Frank Cronin.
Thank you, Ms. Cronin.
So this just gives us the ability to reduce it if they prove to us that it's necessary. Applicants just demonstrate low requirements are appropriate, traffic engineer, general manual, gives us the ability to reduce the parking if appropriate.
I, I like the idea of waiting until we do the 3A bylaws and just include it in that. I would also, I think, want to add more strict language where, I'm just thinking that, a situation where they reduce it, but then there's more cars than expected, and now cars are just parking up and down summer street or any other back road, and that you have a hammer to say, nope, you gotta go back in and rebuild the whole thing now.
You could also require them to maintain it.
Yeah.
Maintain the space, there's open space, and then-
So you want to pass over this right now?
That's my preference, but I'll respect the wishes of the board, they feel differently.
I think incorporating into the 3A changes makes a lot of sense.
Can I add, as a citizen? I agree, and I support Mrs. Cronin. It would be foolish to do otherwise. But I think, you know, the current language, if they can demonstrate, and it might not be specifically for the transit area, but for some other business, that engineered traffic historical data can justify, construct the paving of fewer spaces in the zoning bylaw, then you can approve that, but you can also require that they reserve space for additional parking, should the building inspector discover that a year or two later is a problem.
Which, which we've done.
Yeah, you have. And I think it works pretty well.
Yeah. Mr. Mullins is probably right, we also need to define what near means.
Right.
And I think that will fix itself in the 3A zoning.
Like, does Abing, is Abington News, the smoke shop, considered near transit? I don't think being near transit would reduce their need for parking at all.
Right, right.
Or Dunkin' Donuts, but-
So, can I ask a procedural question? When you're taking votes to pass over, who is, are all these on, like, if you vote to pass this over, does that mean you're going to pull it off the warrant? Or is that going to be your recommendation? It's going to be printed in the warrant, you're going to recommend it be passed?
I think we're going to pull them.
Okay. If you can, great.
Yeah. I'll double-check that, but I think that's what we've done in the past.
Either way, if it can't be pulled, you'll make the motion to pass over for the following reasons.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the motion's been made to pass over, seconded.
Second.
All those in favor of passing over this article?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to number six. Amend 17563A by adding, green roofs shall be used on commercial, industrial, and similar construction for treatment of roof top runoff, should appropriate site conditions and construction techniques allow feasible implementation. And by adding a new subsection BB, it is required, recommended that stormwater drainage from impervious surfaces where pollutants are likely, such as parking lots and roadways, be directed to a suitable-sized stormwater treatment device.
Do you want to change the language on B, the board may require?
Isn't that already required?
I was going to say, we don't already do that?
I believe we do, especially under the MS4 permit.
Yeah, that's, I guess that's what I'm trying to, I mean, I like the other part, but I'm not-
I'm not sure the purpose of adding this language, when that's the whole purpose of engineering or stormwater management services.
Right.
Required by law.
Right.
I mean, I, I said, all, let me, let me tell you, another reason why you might not want to put that in, is stormwater management, you know, like, will kick in only on certain sized parking lots, whatever, so a small parking lot may not require a full-blown stormwater management. This would, if you say may, it might not, but if you say required, it would require stormwater management to be put in that small, even though, that small parking lot, even though DEP requirements might not, so I would tread lightly on adding that. In general, I think it happens as a matter of course, anyhow.
It does, too.
Right. Yeah, that language, where pollutants are likely, kind of takes the size out of discussion, whether it's large or whether it's small, you could say, pollutants are likely.
Anywhere a car parks, a pollution is possible.
Right.
Whether it's a single-family driveway or a-
Right.
-large parking lot.
I've had cars like that.
What's that?
I've had cars like that.
Yeah, we got a car affectionately as the Exxon Valdez, because it leaked oil.
And I guess whether the board thinks that it's worthwhile to vote to add the green roof language is up to you guys.
Are we generally in agreement that section B doesn't need to be there?
I would agree with that.
Yeah.
So I guess motion to strike section B and move forward to section A only? Which, the current bylaw does not have, it's not broken into A and B, so the current bylaw is just the first sentence, so you're basically just adding a second sentence to the sections 165, 17563. So you're not adding to section A, you're not going to, there's no need to use the A, because there is no B now.
Right.
Just so you're aware. Guess I like to see that section used more often, when things come before us. We never see swales.
Yeah.
So the motion's been made, seconded.
So, we're not, are we going, well, seconded, but discussion before, are we changing the may to shall? I would, I would say we leave it as may.
May.
Just for the, gives them the options.
Right.
Well, you know, as Sean had mentioned earlier, it provides somebody with a sense of what we'd like to see.
Yeah. And it could give them some, yeah, some design options.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of credits out there for this stuff now, so by doing some of these things, they can also apply for tax credits and for being a good neighbor.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
A motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And this is the last one, folks. Item number seven, 177, 17577B5K is deleted and replaced with the following K. The location of all greens, open space included in its tenant use, all proposed landscaping elements by size and location, and details required by chapter 17565, 17565 vegetation is deleted and replaced by a new 17565 vegetation and preservation of tree canopy.
So, did everybody get the email from our former chairman?
Wayne, yes.
Wayne? I had a conversation with him today, which I'm happy to share anything with you, if you'd like, about trees and genus and species, it was fascinating. But I wanted to, I wasn't sure if he meant feet or inches on the sizes, I'm trying to put a list together, so it's more of a straight list than, that we would have in its feet.
So is the dimension at breast height, is that four feet, or is it a different number?
Hmm?
I mean, the standard is breast height, and this says four feet. Is it more than four feet? Is that breast height, the four feet?
Four and a half.
That's what I, I read somewhere else, it's four and a half.
Basically, two-way, and I meant to call the gentleman who owns, used to be Capeway Nursery, which is where most of the developers and builders have to buy their trees, now it's Weston Nurseries. There's two ways that trees can sometimes be measured. One is at breast height, which is typically four and a half feet above the ground, and the other one is the caliper, typically one foot above the roof, the root ball. Apparently, I'm told now that that's how a landscape company will measure it, is down at the, at the, the one foot above the root ball. Our bylaw has always looked at breast height. The concern was, at one point, there was a discussion about increasing the breast height minimum to four inches or five inches, and I talked to some local landscapers, and they were like, what, are you crazy? A, it's hard to find those sized trees on a lot, on a landscaping supply lot. Number two, once you get above three inches, the trees get incredibly heavy, very expensive, and then hard to transport and hard to plant. So three inches is a good-sized tree. That means it's a tree that's been already grown for usually one to three years before it is sold. So-
Have I put in here that I want mature trees planted?
No.
Okay.
No, you're, you're fine, I just wanted to kind of bring this all around, because that's how, I think we kind of got here, was how do we dictate or suggest the number of trees and the size of trees, the type of trees? It's not easy to write.
As we're finding out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I personally don't care if it's six inches at four feet, or six inches at breast height, or, or three inches at 18 inches above the root ball, or whatever the standard is, I'm fine with any of those. The idea is just that I want people coming in here saying, we're cutting down this number of mature trees, and we're replanting this many, and this is why. And I'm not saying can't have backyards, I'm not saying can't have front yards, I'm not saying you can't plant a street tree. I'm saying I want them to come in here and at least tell us what the plan is, and that they put some thought into it. So, you know, if, if the detail is, one tree for every three trees of six inches are cut down, if it's five inches, four inches, 12 inches, I'm flexible. I just want them to, I want this to be part of our consideration, is the impact that they're having on the tree canopy, and to make sure we're getting something back that, when mature, is going to be worthwhile.
And I think your use of breast height to measure an existing tree is appropriate in this circumstance, because you're talking about the removal of existing trees, so you'd go out with the caliper and you'd measure it at breast height, and see if it triggers this. So, I think that language is fine. I do have some suggested amendments, when the time comes. But I like, I like the idea of this. I fully support this, it's just trying to write it is difficult.
Only reason I would say four feet or give a specific height is because, depending if it's Jason Harris going out there, or Marion going out there-
Right.
-you're going to have a different result.
Yeah, and I, and I cite 4.5 only with the research I've done, and that's the standard for, the phrase breast height is four and a half feet.
More than happy to amend this to say, to measure it at four and a half feet, if that's what the typical standard is.
Just trying to be consistent, because I read that somewhere else, and I don't remember where it was right at the moment. Maybe it was in Wayne's thing.
Can I make a comment about part, let's start with part B, B as in Betty? Yeah. It says, as part of the documents required for site plan applications, blah, 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 blah. Do you want to also add or subdivision applications?
Yeah.
I don't want you to be mad at me later that I didn't tell you about it, so putting that in. So, I guess definitive subdivision, subdivision applications. And then it says, the second to last sentence, natural tree coverage and other desirable natural foliage shall be preserved in our lots to the maximum extent possible, except for areas where essential construction activity will be taking place. I had a concern with the phrase maximum extent possible, and that it limits it, accepts only construction activity. So I was going to suggest, except for areas where essential construction activity and the creation of reasonable yard space will be taking place. Because if you don't put, mention the yards, and I can only, and you only exempt construction area, and I'm supposed to maintain trees to the maximum extent possible, then you're essentially not letting me cut down a tree that might be, you know, a large tree 20 feet off my house, because it's not in the construction area. But yet, typically, you're going to have the yard area. Depending on the size of the lot, you might have a 40-foot deep backyard, or you might have a 60-foot deep backyard, but we want to be able to at least come to you and say, this is what we're proposing, and that's why we want to cut down that tree. Because this is a four-bedroom house, it's going to have kids in it, room for a pool, we'd like to take out that tree. Not just, I'm only allowed to take out these trees around the building footprint immediately. Kind of semantics, but-
Yeah, I mean, is backyard landscaping considered essential construction for a single-family home?
Yeah, that's why I say reasonable yard space, so that's where you guys can say, you know, if I say, this two-acre lot, I'm going to clearcut it to the back, because I want to use the whole yard, you can say, no, it's a little unreasonable, you're clearcutting everything, we're going to require you to keep some trees, at least in, you know, the back 100 feet, or whatever you got. Just so it's obviously clear, that when you build a building, you have clearance around the property. Commercial buildings, you're going to have clearance for security, say, for aesthetics. Residentially, you're going to have yard space, you're going to have yard setbacks, too. But again, it allows them to come forward and say, this is, you know, designate where their proposed yard is, how far are you going to cut? Still tell us where all these large trees are, they have to still do that, but they inherently would be allowed to cut them down if it's in their proposed yard area, unless you think that they're being unreasonable.
So we're leaving essential, or removing essential construction?
I would just add, I think you can leave his words, the V words-
And then just add the creation of reasonable yard space?
Yeah, so where essential construction activity and creation of reasonable yard space will be taking place.
Okay.
And I just wanted to just make sure I'm correct. The beginning of this part B talks about trees greater than six inches, and then the last sentence talks about trees greater than eight inches.
Yeah, that should be six inches.
Okay.
It should be six on both?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it should be four and a half in section C, the last sentence, 20 feet in height, six inches in diameter, and four and a half feet above ground level when mature?
Yeah.
Okay.
Six inches in, yeah, I guess, I mean, I'm just trying to think of what species, actually Wayne might have that. I don't know, he doesn't.
Did I not send you that list?
Yeah, I did get the list, but the six inches in diameter, that concerns me. You, you could have a 20-foot or 30-foot tall tree, but it might not be six inches in diameter. Some species would be six, some are four. That's okay, I don't wanna parse through it that...
It's a target.
Yeah, exactly.
And I'm actually gonna try to get that list into a spreadsheet tomorrow.
I think most of those trees were, when they were mature, were a lot bigger than six inches.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think you described it in width of the tree, the canopy.
Yeah.
The height and the width of the tree itself and not the caliper, but...
Yeah.
I think... And I think, I also wanna clarify, and I think Wayne mentioned it too, this talks a lot more about canopy than tree preservation, that we should, you know, evergreens and those type of trees should be encouraged also in certain settings, and I think they will be in the language, but, and not just trees that grow tall and spread their wings, their branches.
Oh, I'd love to have more seventy foot pines.
What's that?
I'd love to have some more seventy foot pines planted.
Yeah, but even...
Nobody wants one near their house, so...
But even blue spruce or, you know, white pines or whatever, in different locations, some locations you don't want those. You know, it's, it, you should have that variety and not just deciduous trees.
Yep, one hundred percent.
Deciduous trees, which are trees that, where the leaves fall.
Is there somewhere in here that insinuates that tree canopy means it has, it's deciduous only?
Well, canopy itself.
Canopy, okay.
Kind of implies branches, and I think Wayne mentioned that, said, why not also evergreens? It can be a mix, it probably should be a mix.
One hundred percent, I absolutely want a mix. This is not a deciduous town by any stretch of imagination.
Right. So, I had a comment in part D, or maybe more than one? Just clarification, number D1, street trees, just, it says, in order to provide a uniform streetscape look, the developer shall plant trees, and I want to insert the phrase, parallel to the street line approximately every forty feet, blah, 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 blah. I mean, you and, you and I know that a street tree is that, you know, is, is, is the line of trees, but it doesn't say it in this rewrite that it's parallel to the street line art.
I'd move that.
And the next sentence is, when more than three trees will be planted, and this is for street trees, the tree shall consist of three, of at least three varieties of appropriate native species. Wayne questioned it too, I wasn't sure why we should do that. That if you're gonna have, if you're gonna design the street, subject to plan what's approval, where you have the line of trees on the left, you know, on the left and right of the street, like we've seen in the newer subdivisions, why do we want three different types of trees? I know, I'm guessing one answer is, what happens if there's a disease that knocks out the trees, you know, species that you planted, could happen. That was a, definitely a suggestion from Wayne where, for instance, if you take, what's the one off Plymouth Street?
Veterans Place?
No, Jean Carroll.
Jean Carroll has all...
It's all...
Pears.
Pears or something. That, you know, it, it risks the danger of, if there was a blight, that the entire stretch would be decimated versus where if you had a mix, you know, it's more healthy, but I don't, I'm, I'm willing to, to strike that. I'd suggest you strike it, but I think it's, I think the board still has the right to discuss it at a planning board hearing.
I mean, you'd say, when more than six trees are replanted, or nine trees, or, you know, at what point do we ask for variety, I guess? Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'd be more comfortable with just two species, but having three, I think it looks really, I don't know. Of course, it depends on what the species are, the, three different species of maple trees, that's one thing. But if it's a maple and a honey locust and a pear tree, then I think it's gonna look pretty gaudy.
Pear trees aren't on the list.
Right, not anymore.
Not anymore.
I'm okay striking that sentence, if the board's okay with that.
When more than three trees are to be planted?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Chairman, if, the last sentence of that same section, which says, to be considered a street, streetscape tree, the tree must be planted within ten feet of the sidewalk or roadway, which is what we have now, but I thought it might be an opportunity to kind of slightly rewrite that to say, that the tree must be planted no less than five feet, or no closer than five feet from the edge of pavement or utilities. Right now, we have a ten foot tree easement, and theoretically, the tree can be planted anywhere in that ten feet. The closer you put it to the sidewalk, excuse me, especially depending on the type of tree, the riskier it becomes that you're gonna rip up the sidewalk with roots and all. And of course, the farther away from the sidewalk, you're getting into the homeowner's front lawn, it's like, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. But I don't think we want to allow a developer to plant the tree two feet off of the sidewalk edge. That wouldn't be bad. Again, something you guys can look at, you guys could just kind of dictate that, but if, God forbid, it gets overlooked, if we put it in the bylaw, that the street tree shall be at least five feet off of the pavement edge. So what, when I, and I say pavement edge, so if there's a sidewalk, it's off that, if it's, if there is no sidewalk, it's off the street or utilities.
Most cases, that's where the utilities would be, right?
What's that?
Most cases, that's where the underground utilities would be, right?
Right, one side of the street?
Yeah.
That would be electric, electric or cable or whatever, yeah.
Are you using pavement?
Yeah, so I said, but no closer than five feet from the edge of pavement or utilities.
That makes sense.
And then I have comments on part D2, if you can bear with me. This is the other option, which is custom groves, which is a great idea, the developer may opt to plant a minimum of four trees in a manner that provides additional canopy, a natural boundary between property lines, a growth style landscaping feature, or other enhanced landscaping designs. That language there, I think, allows you to put in evergreens or other mixes there, so I think that's great. The tree shall be at least twenty feet in height at full maturity. The tree shall consist of a mix of varieties appropriate, of appropriate native species and be located in the front yards or side yards of the residential properties and where appropriate in commercial properties. I had two comments to that sentence. One was, why limit it to only front and side yards? Depending on the layout, you might want something in the backyard planted by the developer for screening, especially if you're on a curve or if you have two streets backing up against each other, you have backyards looking into backyards. So, I don't know that we need that language. And then the native species only, I was gonna say, or cultivars, which Wayne Smith had also suggested. And for those of you who may be watching this meeting who don't know who Wayne Smith is or what his history and background is, Wayne Smith was the chairman of the board here for over forty-five years, but more importantly, he has been working in the nursery, tree nursery business for more than forty-five years. So he knows his stuff, and he had recommended that. And I really didn't know what a cultivar was until he wrote that, so I kind of looked it up, and as I understand it, it is a tree that has been, I don't know what the word is, but it's designed to survive in this climate and to be disease resistant and to thrive, which is, I think, what we would like. Coincidentally, I just found out that the Conservation Commission, I didn't just find out, the Conservation Commission just passed a new regulation where they have a thing about removal of trees, and they don't allow cultivars in the wetlands of the buffer zone. I'm not sure their reasoning, I'm sure they have a reason, but I haven't, I was not able to go to their meeting last, I think it was last Tuesday. But, and it might be a different reason for not having a cultivar in a wetland area or near a wetland than there is for the planning boards, typical street area or yard area. So I would suggest that it be appropriate native species or cultivar.
And then strike, and...
I think you can almost strike everything after that, because, you know, why, why limit, we don't have to limit it to front and side yards, just let them come with a plan and show you what they're proposing. And the same thing would be true with the commercial property. You don't need to say where appropriate, let them come with a plan, and then we would look at it, you would look at it, and say, that looks good, well designed, or we should move this and relocate it, or add two more over here. So instead, that sentence would just say, the tree shall consist of a mix of varieties of appropriate native species or cultivars, or and/or cultivars, I guess. And then the very next sentence says, a list of acceptable trees shall be available to the planning board office, so you just shouldn't, you know, whatever comes in your plan should already be an approved tree or cultivar.
Mildly hesitant to see is that, I mean, I, I know we ultimately have review, I wouldn't want someone to think that the acceptable solution then is to have three trees in the backyard and nothing on the side of the front yard. The idea is that it's spread, but I understand what you're saying, where if it's a loop, such as, for instance, Colonel Hunt, you know...
Veterans Place.
Veterans Place.
Right. It's a horseshoe shape, so you have backyards looking at each other.
That you might wanna have one of them in the backyard as an option, but...
Right.
I guess as long as the board feels comfortable that this gives us the ability to say, no, we don't mean all of them are just in the backyard and you're being lazy, that, you know, gives a reason as to why that's the best place. It's fine.
Yeah, I think, in the end, I think they have to satisfy the board. And these are minimum standards, they could do more than what's required, as could a homeowner, the homeowner might add trees. I added trees, you know, I planted some blue spruce along my property lines, and intentionally, my landscape design guy, you know, we put them in places where, as the years go by, they'll provide privacy and screenage from the houses. Instead of putting them out in the backyard, we put them like between the houses, just for that reason. And I can see that, you know, happening in other locations. So the trees are aesthetically, but nice, but they also serve a purpose. Never mind the store more benefits, that's also a benefit.
Unfortunately, in most subdivisions, they're just trying to do the minimum.
Well, that's the problem. A lot of people come through here and do the bare minimum, it's too much.
Yeah, I mean, it's difficult to, I mean, in the, in the developer's defense, you know, when, when you get your plan approved and you have a hundred and twenty foot wide lot or whatever it is, and you have the street, well, you're gonna have to clear all of the street, all fifty-two feet of the street, and you're gonna have to clear all of the area around where the house goes. And you're also gonna clear all of the area where the utilities come in, and you're gonna clear all the area where the driveways are, and you also wanna have a fall zone around the house. So you're gonna do a lot of clearing when you're making a residential subdivision. In certain areas or with different sizes, you might be able to, to preserve certain existing trees. And, you know, I've worked with developers where we try to do that because, number one, it's cheaper, the developer doesn't have to plant a tree if he can save some trees, if they are healthy, and if, you know, especially if they're located in a place that, hey, this is a natural buffer between the neighbors, which they'll appreciate, which it, you do have issues though, and I, and Wayne brought this up, and I saw it in my neighborhood, when you have a, let's call it a forest, a dense forest, and you cut into it and clear it out, the new trees that are at the edge of the forest are now a significant risk because they used to be protected from the wind, and now they are exposed to the wind, and those are likely going to fall or die within the first two years. I shouldn't say likely, much more apt to do so. And we saw that, I lost eight, eight trees in that big windstorm in October, right along the edge, right behind my fence, and luckily, they all fell parallel to my fence and not this way. And two houses down, they had a couple go down. So a tree guy came in and cut out some of the ones, he said, that's gonna go if you don't take it down now. Those are issues that are just gonna happen regardless, no matter how we plant it. Sorry, I'm...
It, it's hard to save trees because of the size of the lots.
Right.
You know, I know I tried to save trees at my house and I ended up cutting them down, you know.
It is, and like I said, I think...
So it's easier sometimes to plant trees than it is to save trees.
Right, 'cause in, some of the trees that are in locations that you can save are, for lack of a better word, ugly trees. Trees that don't offer any sort of privacy, because they're, they are too tall, and they don't have any...
They lose all their branches on the way up.
Yeah, so a lot of times, it's the new trees that are going in that, you know, like, Summit Row where Wayne lived, you know, of course, those are all fifty year old trees now, and they're nice and beautiful and big. It's just, some of us don't have the patience to wait thirty or forty years to see what these things become.
Don't have the opportunity.
More time.
Any comments on part three of this?
Yeah, one more comment and that's it.
Okay.
Me, I don't think I have any more in that section, I thought, again, I agree with the intent of this, to get some flexibility and to get, let's have the developer come up with a good proposal and you guys can offer suggestions.
Yeah, I mean, the, the basis of this was, when we did, or is it? This one, this study, they found out we actually have a denser tree canopy than a lot of other towns around us.
We do, Abington is a very, and I know some people do not believe that, but...
Yeah, so it's like, and you look at a geographical satellite map, and it's like, Abington's still green, and there's a lot of towns around that are just a lot more gray. So, you know, I did, and I know that the first inkling for people is just, cut it down and then we'll put something else up afterwards, and it's just, let's think about this. Do you have to cut down every single tree?
And, believe me, the, I know for a fact there are developers who will only cut down the minimum like for yard space, because cutting down and removing mature trees is a very expensive thing to do. So if I have a lot that's two hundred feet deep, no developer, unless he owns it himself and wants to put a big yard out there, no developer's gonna clear it to the backyard. They're gonna do the typical forty foot backyard and stop.
But it's also the microclimate, I mean, I, I don't wanna lecture people, but we have a big red maple in our yard, and I've always wondered why they planted it in that space, and what I realized was, it's because otherwise, the afternoon sun in the summertime beating down into our, the house twenty-four seven, and well, except for nighttime.
It's true.
But you have this big, huge, fluffy, green maple tree, and the house is fifteen degrees cooler than it is outside because the house, the sun never gets into the house.
My mother did the same thing, and it's a deciduous tree, so in the summertime, it creates a shade for the sun and the heat. And in the wintertime, it drops and allows the sun to come through.
Yeah.
So there is a science to some of, you know...
But the tree fell, it's gonna hit the house.
Yeah.
But for the most part, the benefit is just enormous. I can't imagine how hot the house would be without that tree blocking everything.
Are you gonna make a motion on that one?
Yeah, need a motion?
Motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That wraps that part of the meeting up. We're gonna get into discussion action, request to release twenty-two, twenty-two interest on the Q circle bond.
So I think I sent everybody the email from town council?
Yep, October second, twenty nineteen.
Yes.
So, I only have one question. At what point, so obligated on twenty twenty-two to give him his interest back, but going forward, we could, if we feel the need that we need more bond, considering how old the bond is, we could put the interest towards the bond?
You would have to make that agreement with him. I believe that's the answer.
I didn't really see anything other than a suggestion. I didn't know the procedure part of it, I guess, is why I'm asking.
That last sentence...
I know, the last time I asked Dave about it, there was, there was enough money there. My fear is, everything is going up, and this has been going on since two thousand and two.
Right.
That eventually, there's not gonna be enough money there.
Yeah, the last sentence is pursuant to GL chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U. However, the applicant may pick the form of security, and in my opinion, the interest being held could only be applied as additional security if agreed to by the applicant.
With that, with that said, by the time, it was my feeling, by the time the rest of that project is done, we agreed to put off the top coating, because when we approved that last section of that project, he was supposed to have finished the rest of it. We agreed because of the construction...
Right.
That the top coat could wait until the last section was ready to do the top coat. At that point, I'm gonna make the suggestion, we take his bond to finish. At that point, I'm gonna make the suggestion, we take his bond to finish, I guess, is where I'm going with that.
Okay.
And I think that we basically discussed that before, because it's been going on for way too long, that project.
I agree, and now he doesn't even own...
Right.
The third piece of that.
Right, we're still holding the bond to finish, the main part of it, though.
Right, but it's...
Which is basically a top coat.
Right, and at the time, you agreed to that, he owned the third project.
Right.
And now he doesn't any longer.
Right. We still could have helped beat to the fire, I think, and finished. He needed to finish what was, but a potential, and why we didn't, potential that it could be damaged with the trucks coming in and out.
Not to rehash, relitigate this, but right now, who's, who's required to finish McHugh Circle?
So Mr. Rourke is required to finish McHugh Circle.
Okay.
The new road, Robert English Way comes off of that. And just so you all know, I had the new property owner of Mr. Blakeman's property and his friend, who I guess is a developer, in the office, like two weeks ago, who wanted to look at the file and see what was going on.
So they didn't buy it to preserve it?
Maybe that's not how it started, that may be how it ends, because I sent them right off to the water department. Because it doesn't matter what they want to do, it's gonna require some water.
So is there a scenario where Robert English Way could be finished, but McHugh Circle isn't?
Yes.
That's, that's what I was talking of, the part of, that's when I would suggest to take his bond and finish it ourselves.
Yep.
So that, that's actually the other question I have for you guys. So if we could do one at a time, maybe vote to release the bond first, because I just don't think you have any choice.
No, we do not.
Unless you want to end up in litigation over $102.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
That's to release the interest.
The interest, yeah.
Second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Robert English Way.
So I left this on the agenda because my last correspondence with the current owner of Robert English Way was about the stormwater management. And I forwarded him town council's opinion and then her restatement of her opinion that they do have to show that they're compliance with the stormwater management. And I've heard nothing from him since I sent that. So I don't know how you want, I wasn't gonna email him to follow up until I talked to you guys, and what, what would you like me to do? Do nothing?
Has there been any more construction activity on the site?
I don't know.
I guess my suggestion is that there's no more construction activity on the site until the, comes into compliance. But I'm not always quite sure how that whole process works.
I don't know if we could do that.
Well, I think you would say...
As a stormwater permitting authority, you, I, I'm not, I'm not sure that you could do that tonight, because I think he would have to be notified, and I think there's a process to doing that.
Well, my recollection of the last conversation we had was that, and here at this meeting, was that he would have to get an engineering resource, went back to the engineering resource that he previously had, and that person, the engineering firm had been acquired.
Bought out, yeah.
And so that created some complications because the group that he was going to go to to ask to do the work, that wasn't, that was no longer an option.
So when that meeting ended, that was the conversation the board had with him.
Yep.
I told them I would provide them with the stormwater management...
Yep.
...document that was received during the subdivision approval process...
Yep.
Which was the first thing I did the next day. I went in, I copied it.
Yep.
His partner picked it up, and I want to say, a day or two later, I received an email from him, once again stating, I think questioning what town council had said. And then I cut, and then I verified with her again that that is indeed what he needs to do. I cut and pasted that and sent it to him, because there was other stuff in there.
I think we talked about it here that night.
Yeah, and I, and I sent that to him.
It's been made several times.
And that's, that's where it has ended.
Yeah.
I have not heard anything back. I mean, he, he never reached back to say, "I got an engineer," I mean, and I don't want to follow up because I don't want to get him any angrier than he already was with me. So I'm at your direction on what you want me to do. I'd be happy to follow up with him via an email. I'd be happy to ask.
Let me just, my understanding of the situation is that we don't know if there's work that's still being done there. He, he could take the subdivision all the way through to completion without having done the stormwater calculations, but he couldn't get occupancy permits? Is that correct?
Not gonna get a building permit.
He's not gonna get a building permit?
Right.
And the town will not accept the road?
So I would think that that's going, that it would be important to make that clear.
Okay.
Because if, if, if that's the path you're pursuing, then this is the problem that it's going to create for you inevitably.
I think...
All this work, all that money that you're going to spend, and you're gonna end up in a bad place.
You would think he would understand that as a developer. We made it pretty clear to him that he needs to follow the stormwater manner. So he potentially could build the whole road. He's not gonna get a building permit until he proves to us.
Right. No, I guess, I think the other...
So it would behoove him not to spend all that money without some sort of...
Right. The other part of this, I think, is that the stormwater regs, if I recall correctly, gives us the ability to take $2,500, was that the dollar amount? They could be used...
That's just for the engineering, and quite frankly, at the end of the day, we're gonna need more than that if we're gonna have, right now, I have zero.
Right.
Zero engineering review fees because Jim Rock paid, there was a deficit, Jim Rock paid it, and so we're at zero. So I...
So can you just refresh my recollection of what that section of the...
So yes, we can take $2,500 strictly for the stormwater, but there are gonna be other engineering things that come up that we're not gonna be able to get reviewed because I don't have any money.
Other engineering things, like?
The roadway. I mean, I don't know if Dave's supposed to go out and inspect, but like, because normally, this, this is bypasses sort of, right? The developer works out a schedule with Dave, they call him when this gets done, they call him when that gets done, and he goes out and he makes sure the pipe isn't correctly, and you know what I mean? So all of that takes place, I mean, years ago, when we used PMP for that, I would get inspection reports when they went out to a subdivision and did inspections on the construction of the road.
I feel like there was enforcement language in the bylaw.
There is.
So whether that enforcement language is, do we have to hold a public hearing and call them in, or can the building commissioner order a cease and desist, stop work order? Or what's the other potential lever? And if we need town council to weigh in on that, that's fine. But I know there's language, I just, I didn't look it up right now, but I mean, I just can't, I just can't believe that he would be able to start going in and doing the work and not do anything without us being able to say, "Wait a minute, you can't do that, you have to come back here." There's gotta be some enforcement mechanism.
Right, well, I mean, he, if that starts happening, then certainly, you guys, as a stormwater permitting authority, could order a cease and desist. The building inspector does do the enforcement piece of that.
Can I suggest to just send him an email and see where he's at?
Well, that's, like, I don't want to, I don't want to go all in at 100 miles now with him either.
No, no, I mean, the fact of the matter is that we don't know what the current state of affairs is.
Right, I don't know if he's doing work out there, I don't know if he's having it reviewed.
And we don't know what the intentions are.
Right.
And so I think it's very fair for us at this point to say...
What's going on?
We, we need, we need to, we'd like to know what's going on. Because, and until we know that, we don't know what it accepts.
From our last meeting and last conversation with him, he was, he was pretty concerned about what it was gonna cost him, so I would like to think he's, you know...
Would you, would you like the letter to come from Mr. Harris instead?
No, I don't mind reaching out to him. I was actually gonna ask you, if you wanted me to, I could ask Jason to go out and walk, take a ride out there and see if it looks like any progress is going on or any, you know what I mean? If there's any work being done.
Yep.
Because that would obviously elevate things to a different level, and I'm not trying not to do that.
Right. I think we explained in, in the last meeting that we're all kind of in a bad place on this.
Right.
So that he got started, then the stormwater regs got passed, puts him in a difficult position.
Well, he bought the project he felt already permitted.
Yeah.
Which it was, but this came after, and he still has to comply with it.
He still has to comply, and I think we made it clean, that clear, that this isn't a concoction of this board.
Right.
This is coming from the state, this is coming from other...
Our friends at the state and federal government.
Regulatory authorities, they're kind of saying, "We have to do this."
Right.
So we don't have much discretion in that regard. So I mean, we're all kind of suffering through this together, and I think that's the point, that we're willing to do the best, the board, and I can't speak for others on the board, but do the best that we can to work with them to get through this and figure out how we're gonna make it right. But it's been a while since we've heard anything, and we don't know what, what's going on.
Right.
So it looks like we do have cease and desist authority.
Okay.
As well as order to immediately remediate the issue. And we can recur costs, and we can also find $100 a day, $300 a day. So I, there, there is some language in here that can say, "Hey, start to pay attention."
All right, so why don't I email him tomorrow? I'll see if Mr. Harris can just take a look out there, see if he notices anything, and then see if, and then I, I might have an answer for you next Monday.
Mr. Riley, did you have a call?
I did. Sean Riley, 271 Dorsey Street. I don't represent the developer, I know him, and I was at that meeting you guys were talking, when he was here, and he was very upset about the cease and desist order, and it was a mistake, and you guys explained how it all happened. Great. And to Mr. Shepherd's point, it's possible that he does have an engineer, and he's working on this and trying to resolve it, and it took, and when was that meeting, we had that, was it last month?
January.
Yeah, was it last month?
No, it was January.
So it may be a work in process, the engineer work in process, and it's...
Perhaps.
Yeah.
Just hasn't hit your desk yet.
Yeah.
At the same time, I don't think there was ever any discussion at that meeting where you guys said, "Do not do any work until that gets approved." I think my takeaway was, whatever you do is at your own risk. If you, if you don't satisfy it, you might have to undo some things or do extra things. So if there's been work on that property, I don't know that that's reason for a cease and desist. It's like, but we do need your engineer's report, sooner rather than later, where are you in your, in your process?
That was my suggestion, to at least reach out and see where they're at before we go down that...
All right, do you want me to then perhaps include, like, put into writing that if you are working out there, you do so at your own risk and you may have to undo and redo? I mean, again, I don't want to make this an inflammatory situation, but I also don't want him to come back and say, "Well, you never told me that."
Yeah.
Right?
I thought it was pretty clear, it was...
Yeah, I, I, my sense, my recommendation would be to avoid that kind of language.
Okay.
Because I think we already have a, we've already established a boiling point here. And the, and the, and the intent is to just...
Get a status update.
We need some communication.
Right.
We need to understand what's happening here, and so help us understand, and then we'll figure out where we're gonna go from there.
All right.
I don't, I don't mean to extend this conversation at all regarding Bob's idea or thought about McHugh Circle. Is that something we can discuss further at the next meeting? Do we have to give them notice? The thought was, if we wanted to say, "Just so you know, if this work is not completed by the time Robert English Way is completed," or given, "We're gonna take it and we're gonna do..."
Top coat should be done at the same time.
Right.
Right.
Because...
And, yeah, you're probably right, we probably should at least tell him, because he's probably not looking, watching these meetings.
Right. That basically sent him a note saying that if this is not done by the time that this is done, we're taking it and we're doing it.
Okay.
Whatever date that might be.
Thought that was very clear, though, at the meeting, that they needed to be done simultaneously, but I will send a reminder.
Right, but that would be to Mr. Rourke.
Yes.
That's to Mr. Rourke, yeah.
Yep.
It was very clear, but we never made it very clear to him whether or not...
Have someone go out there and take a look at it.
Okay.
That'd be good. Okay.
So send an email to Jim Rock.
I just, we'll continue that conversation. Makes no sense to me to let something go for 20 years.
We still have two more things, and then we're, we'll be done.
Actually, not much.
Well, that's all. Update on the MBTA community?
All right, I think I told you guys, we have grant money, and I think I forwarded you the email from Dottie with the new tools. You can draw the circle or the hexagon thing, whatever. What do they call that? For witches? Yes. What am I talking about, though? The pentagram?
That thing.
You can draw a pentagram. So I have a meeting with her on Thursday, so we'll delve a little more into this. And then, for Mr. Hughes, I got an email from Nathan Carlucci today, who again pointed out that the MBTA 3A zoning is part of the CPTC series at Holy Cross, right?
Right, actually, I signed up for that. That's an advert a week from Saturday. The deadline to register for that is March 14th. Go to www.ctpc.org, and I've actually signed up for that class. It's in the morning, so if you can only attend, the thing runs from 8:00 till 3:30. If you can only attend till noon time, you could go to that MBTA class. I also signed up for the solar zoning session.
Oh, good.
Which I know is gonna be really good, and I may be moderating a session or two, we'll see, but...
Are any of them online?
All right.
Will any of them be on, no?
No.
Because I want to go, I just, I don't know if I can go out there physically.
Right, it's a, it's a trek. Yeah, they don't...
It's an hour and a half.
Yeah.
It's an hour and a half. I've done it so many times.
I may have coaching duties, though, that's the problem.
Yeah, it's, well, it's just an hour and a half.
When you register, is there a list of all of the presentations?
Of course, right, right, exactly. Liz has forwarded that to you guys, I know that. But I, I, since the, since I'm on the board, I thought I had to register. I don't have to pay, but you guys would be paid, the town would, town would pay, it's $95.
Yeah, so figure out how, if anybody wants to go, I think we have a credit card that I can use, the town does. Otherwise, it's a check. And they're actually pretty good, I've registered other people for their stuff, and so think about it, if you want to go, let me know, and I can...
Yeah, you'll have somebody, you'll have at least one guy from Abing, let's put it that way.
I had a conversation with Senator Keenan today, and he would welcome a letter from us and from the town in general, asking the state to increase the amount of money for grant funding for infrastructure to support communities dealing with 3A. So sewer, water, roadways, other pieces, because right now, the main grant opportunities that are out there, P Wed, I Qued, there's a third one.
One Stop? The One Stop?
Yeah, I mean, they don't always allow you to apply if you're using it for housing expansion. But yet, that's gonna be a great need for communities like us, is, we are, we're gonna be dealing with it.
The infrastructure.
So the idea would be to ask two things in the upcoming budget discussion, which is, one, to increase the amount of money given to communities in these grant pools, and two, to expand the qualifying uses, to include dealing with the impacts of 3A. So I will try to put a letter together, together this week that we can look at Monday.
Okay.
The idea being that if, get a bunch of towns to sign on to this, might be able to get some action, because it's a hundred and seventy communities that are gonna be requesting the same thing.
Sure. Yep. I saw an article, there's a few communities that haven't given up the ghost yet, they're fighting back.
Middleboro.
Middleboro being one of them.
Yeah.
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 Anything to talk about master plan goals?
I think so.
All right.
We're trying to hit that low-hanging fruit moving forward, quick, quick, quick like bunnies.
Upcoming meetings, town meeting April third, twenty-twenty-three.
Um, I'm assuming, although I don't like to use that word, that you guys will meet ahead of that? All right. So I will post a meeting for next Monday, I'll post a meeting before town meeting on April third.
Time Monday.
What time would you like it to be? You tell me.
It starts at seven, right?
Hmm?
Town meeting starts at seven?
Yeah, he's talking about next Monday, right?
Oh, oh, oh.
Do you want it earlier?
We could meet in the morning.
Right, I mean, do you want it?
Meet at nine AM.
I'm here.
Somebody bring the coffee.
Right, we can do that.
If that's what you want, I could finagle that.
What works?
Early than later.
Would that be, I mean, I think that would be better for everybody, right?
Works for me.
You just send out a notice, nine o'clock in the morning?
All right, what, um, what time? Nine, ten?
Sure, nine.
Nine, okay.
Can you do it at six-thirty, is that helpful? Actually, could you do a meeting at six-thirty?
I'll kill you guys.
Yeah.
Liz not here yet. Liz isn't here at six-thirty. I'm gonna make her come in.
In the morning?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
We'll make it as convenient as the water commissioner meetings.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Oh, did I say that with the microphone?
I think so.
All right, motion to adjourn?
So before we do that, we need a motion to continue the public hearing to Monday, March, what is that, March thirteenth?
Yes, thirteenth.
Running into the ads, March, March thirteenth, at nine AM.
So moved.
Motion seconded.
Nope.
Motion made, seconded.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
See you, gentlemen, at nine o'clock.
And then the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, uh, made, uh, motion.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.